Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If we could have your attention. There's a lot of people in the room in the silence. We will go ahead and get this meeting of the Tallahassee City Council called to order. It is Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, January 7th, 2019, time is 7:03 PM. And we will now have a roll call from the floor.
Counselor Long? Here. Counselor Holmes?
Here.
Counselor Hyers?
Here.
Counselor Bliss?
Here.
We have four.
To lead us in our invocation tonight, we have with us Mr. Mitch Cornell from Grace Baptist Church. Mitch, good to see you. So everyone will please rise.
It's good to see you, Mayor, council, staff. It's always a pleasure to come pray and help with the city council meeting and invitation. So if you'll just join me right now, behind your heads, we'll go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we just thank you so much for every blessing that you have poured out on us. Thank you that we have a city, a state, a country that we can serve and live and worship free, Lord. And we just want to honor you and glorify you in everything that we do here tonight, Lord. So let your hand be on the business tonight, Lord. Let everyone that comes to this podium realize that, Father, that they speak to people that have been chosen from the populace, but the government, the authority, rests on them from you. And so, Lord, that's a heavy responsibility. And so I pray for each and every one of our counselors, our city staff, and our mayor, Father, that they glorify you and honor you in every aspect of their business tonight and every aspect of their lives, Lord. You just don't show up on a Sunday morning at a church, Lord, or a Monday evening at a city council meeting. You're here all with us, all the time. And so, Lord, be with our police officers, our firefighters, our city employees, Lord, as they work and serve you and honor you with their efforts and with their daily tasks that they go about doing. And, Father, just from the top of this government here in Tallahassee to the bottom, I pray that you be glorified and honored in everything we do. Jesus, thank. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir. You'll join me for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two this evening is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted in the general public concerning comments that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time, and the total of all comments in the public shall not exceed fifteen minutes. Reference will be given to Tallahassee citizens. In compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Does anyone that'd like to make any comments? It's time. Seeing no hands going up, we'll move on to item number three, which is our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any items proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session. Counselors, before we ask for a motion, I need to point out a graphical error. The second item in the consent agenda refers to acknowledging the receipt of the financial reports from December of 2018. That should actually read November of 2018. And I would defer to the attorney as to whether we just need to maybe bring this back in our mid-month meeting or can correct that.
I would bring it out. It was off on the menu.
Just acknowledge the receipt.
Okay.
So, councilors, if you all, if you're still inclined to make a motion, if you could remove that item from your motion or have it removed from any consideration, we can bring that back later should you see it necessary.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and removing the consideration from the acknowledgement of the receipt of the financial reports for December 2018. And I would also like to remove, to approve, the budget amendment A.
And, Deanna, where did you go? That was the one that we were talking about this afternoon, correct? Because I think that I here forgot to pull back.
I moved back to the other one.
Okay, so B is the one that I did too ask for in the motion. Okay.
Do you wish to want to move A and B from the...
Certainly can. Would you amend your motion to reflect that?
I will happily amend my motion to also include the removal of item reallocation fee.
Okay. Then A and B will come out and be heard separately, and we have a motion. Is there a second? So again, the second from Counselor Bliss. Clerk, would you give us a roll call?
Can I?
Oh, yes, sir.
Before we do that, I just wanted to, part of this is accepting the resignation of Ms. Hale. And I just want to say thank you for your service in the city. I think you've done a wonderful job. And obviously, the city's loss of Main Street's gain, and so I'm happy that you're going to go over there and be a part of the city and good things are going to be coming around.
If we don't accept her resignation, does she have to stay?
It's the only thing we didn't pull from the consent agenda, so.
You got a chance.
Look forward to working with you, Jamie. Clerk Aldo.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Counselor Hyers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number four is our announcements, presentations, and reports. We have a couple of employees that we would like to recognize this evening for a rather long period of service to the city of Tallahassee and its citizens, residents. We have Stephen Smith, who has five years in the police department. And then, of course, we have Assistant Fire Chief Casey Baker, who has spent a quarter of a century with this institution. And I know the chief would like to say a few things this evening. Chief Hannes?
Yes, I would, I would like to, I need to play him. Can I do this here?
Phil Bruce.
Thank you. Twenty-five years of dedicated service to the city of Tallahassee. A lot of people don't realize that Casey started out at the Parks Department under Caleb Smith, his business back there. But twenty-five years ago, he started working, he worked his way up through the ranks into the police department as a volunteer firefighter, then all the way up through the ranks in the fire service to become Assistant Chief. He has dedicated his life, the last twenty-five years of it, to serving our community, and
I haven't seen this movie or anyone from the library this evening.
I really feel the citizens and the city of Tallahassee can count themselves lucky
Is that correct? And with no one from the library, we will move on to the telephone convention and visitors'
to have a man of that caliber. I see the hours he puts in and the time he puts in that nobody does, and I see what
bureau, Chamber of Commerce. We have Representative Lowe who's going to be a contributor. That's rather unusual.
he does behind the scenes that nobody gets to read about or hear about.
What about the telephone Main Street is kind of in a lurch.
And the man has always put everybody before himself, and he's a great product that he's
Jamie, you want to go ahead and come on up and do your first? You sure?
Next time.
Okay, we'll catch you in the February.
raising in this community, and I would, I'm very proud to stand up here and say that Casey
Then you've got a written report from some various departments, including the street department, commissioner, department head. Does anybody over at the table have anything you'd like to add this evening?
is one of those guys that we depend on tremendously.
Just been very busy.
And twenty-five years is a long time, and, you know, as someone told me tonight, it's
You'll have a little hole for a while, and statistically, it's catching up with you. Everything that you do.
a third of your life, basically.
We'll move on to our regular session, which is item five, discussion of possible action
So it's not just a job, it's a career for him, and it's a life for him, a lifestyle.
on items removed from the consent agenda.
So if I could get Jason, you being mayor, if you want to come down and present this
We did have three different items removed.
with him, I'd like to get a photo.
So we are going to not consider, I would imagine, this month's financial report simply because it's the type of graphical error with the wrong month. And then we have two other items. The first is to approve the budget amendment for 01-07-2018-A. Counselor Long, you'd ask that be removed.
Sorry. Put a piece of cake in my mouth right before I said that. I just wanted to, I didn't get a chance to do my due diligence on this today, and so I wasn't comfortable approving it yet since I had not researched it, so I just wanted to abstain since I hadn't done my due diligence. So, did you want to clarify it, Deanna, to kind of explain what you're doing here on page seven and eight?
I am literally putting the money from where we deposited it, an operating reserve, into the account that you all specified you wanted the money to be spent on.
Can I make a motion for a prayer? A motion in the segment from Counselors Hyers and Holmes. Any questions, comments, councilors, public? Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Bliss?
No.
Counselor Long?
No.
Counselor Hyers?
Yes.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the other item that I had to ask you, kind of amend your motion for, Counselor Long, was to the budget amendment, same number, but B. And it was because there was a misunderstanding and miscommunication that reallocation had some bond money being moved from that bond fund, and that's not supposed to happen. So we thought that this afternoon, and said we will need to pull that. And what we will do instead is just have two different accounts on the P.O. This is for, we have an anonymous donor who contributed a significant portion of money to help us build some sidewalks along water and college avenues. And the bids came in just a touch above what the donor had provided, and I think it was like $7,300 or something in that range. And so what we will do is issue a purchase order with the money, from the account with the money in it from the donor, and then it's a second account, which is from the bond fund, the transportation and pedestrian second account. And that way, it's covered, we're not moving money technically out of that bond fund. Does that make sense? I figured that needed a little bit of explanation, but we don't even need to take any action on that. We can handle that. We will issue it to the P.O. with how I just described. Do you all have any other questions? Then we can move along and then go on to item number six, which is discussion and possible action regarding 2019 farmer's market agreement with the city of Tallahassee. Mr. Carter?
We met with farmer's market a couple weeks ago, and we have the contract in front of you there on page thirteen, and pretty much the same change we set for the date from what was presented on page thirteen.
I went back today and rewatched that meeting I was recording last time we discussed this. And Grant, has your opinion on that changed any since we last talked about this, what you heard, Long?
No.
Okay. So your recommendation is still that we don't do it at zero cost, correct?
Let's stay by what Deanna gave back then, that it, councilors, to find a reasonable balance. There's also a couple typos in here. I think it's another review page fifteen, on that paragraph. That's up here, the line that begins, "The market," it's kind of in all that paragraph at the top, page fifteen. "The market shall pay all three things necessary." See that line?
I can't, twelve to come. Fourth line, yeah.
Third line, bottom of that paragraph, where it says, "Expended by the market," it should be "by the city."
Okay.
Whatever that's worth. Did you see that, Ed?
No.
Which one was that?
American.
Up there, you should see a city, not market.
Where are you asking, what are you talking about?
For, it's in section one, but the tail ends right above section two.
The line should read, should, assuming this is what the council wants to do, "Should the market at any time fail to insure or keep insured as per said, the city may do all things necessary to effect or maintain such insurance, and any monies expended by the," instead of "market," should say "by the city," "for that purpose shall be repayable by the market on demand and value," blah, blah, blah. Because obviously, the city has to step in and do what the market's supposed to do. The market should repay the city.
The standard clause, and we ended up having the wrong name, only one part. Do you have any other changes?
Just the date, there's twenty seventeen on it.
I have a question on the property damage and injury. I mean, that's at the top of page fifteen. I was just curious where that came from.
I don't know, it was in the faulty.
Oh, sorry, I said A, I'm sorry. I apologize. Sorry.
We'd have to think back a couple of years. I don't remember. I think this is about a three or four-year-old contract now, if I remember correctly. Most of the word, ninety-nine percent of the wording in it probably, well, you'd said 2017 is on there, so I would imagine at least that far back.
And we carry forward the same amount of insurance. Do you want to raise the insurance?
Well, I didn't know what our insurance carrier might recommend on that. I think they usually have standards on this that adjust the cost of living like most other things. Trey might know, your insurance guy, right, Trey?
I don't know what, I don't know what the seven of those words are.
One hundred and twenty-five thousand property and one hundred and twenty-five thousand death or injury on any one incident.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand seems pretty cheap to be dead.
You know, I think, what I see, the city is lower amounts, but I don't know, you know, what, I would say that it's probably something that would be advised that you guys consider. We'll approve it and just try to figure out what's, you know, is there a standard level for... We typically do. We typically have actually a million dollars worth of insurance for sports leagues and special events, and occasionally, we'll even ask them to up that a little depending on what the event is. But a million is a notch around a number that's very quickly becoming probably too small, but that's what we typically say. And I honestly don't remember where one hundred and twenty-five thousand came from.
And I don't know, you may ask.
Lauren may know where her policy states, and usually, those limits aren't going to be...
It's probably a bare minimum, and it'll be higher. But, Ms. Sager, would you like to come to the podium and... I'm sorry, I didn't see your arm, it was perfectly behind the pole.
I was afraid of that.
I apologize.
We have a policy for a million dollars. So if you want to up that, that's no problem with that.
I was going to say, I think that's what we have on files is a million dollars.
Right, and Trey, I don't live in the insurance world, but I would imagine it'd probably be hard to go in and say, "I would like to pay nineteen dollar and ninety-five cent insurance policy." I mean, I would imagine they probably would go one hundred and twenty-five, you know, it starts getting small. So we can alter that to read one million dollars, and, you know, that matches what they've already got. That's easy enough to do. You just have to be in your motion.
The only thing I'd like, I'd like to change is that, just a small nominal money amount to that, maybe a thousand dollars for the year. It comes out to like thirty-six bucks per Saturday, which is really less than what we would charge anybody else that rents it. And we charge it all the other nonprofits, the dollar amount. So I think we need to put something in there. You guys are, it's a great, I love going down there, but we need to make it something across the board.
I don't think we have any problem with paying something. I do want to point out the pages that I brought to you today that show what we, in pro bono And we came up with hourly rates are from the Oklahoma Department of Ag. This is what they value us as. And we contributed twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars in pro bono. And I think that says something.
And can you explain what it is you're doing on the pro bono? Cleaning restroom here and there, or...
Providing the market.
The actual market itself?
The hours that we spend providing the market.
Okay. I didn't know if you meant, you know, some kind of support thing that actually ended up benefiting the city as well.
Well, this year, we actually ended up cleaning the bathrooms and providing toilet paper.
Yeah?
Yeah.
First, I'm going to apologize to Counselor Holmes, because I forgot he was the insurance agent, and I actually had a call on him, so I apologize to Counselor Holmes. Grant, I like where Counselor Holmes is going, kind of with a thousand dollar motion. Would that be, in your legal opinion, would that meet the definition of nominal, so that we would be in a better place? Because we know that at zero, we're kind of in a bad area that we don't want to be any further legal recommendations, so.
That's, you're entirely up to you all, it's case specific, and I wouldn't give an opinion on whether it's reasonable or not. Obviously, nothing is nothing, so that's clear cut what it is, but some, some fee would be appropriate, I would think.
I think is there, this doesn't have to be passed tonight. We're here early, so we can get this ready and put into, into place. Because I think that's the problem we've had in the past, is the city's kind of kicked the can down the road until right before the market's about to open.
Last year, it was after the market was open.
Right. And so now, we're here early, we're all involved. So then potentially, maybe there's some talk, some, the councilors put in some suggestions to the, into the contract. Because I understand what Counselor Holmes is saying, and I understand where Counselor Long is going. We've had two different attorneys in the last three years that have given us different opinions. And so, you know, Attorney Jones, Counselor Jones, well, you know, her opinion was that providing a service to the community that others, you know, aren't able to provide kind of a normal function of the city operation, and that's why we were able to allow them to be in the market free of charge. Personally, you know, I like Counselor Jones's, trying to think, but I understand Counselor, Counselor in that term, I mean, not in the, I understand Counselor Lloyd's opinion, but I'd like to research that a little bit, to see kind of where the two opinions come from, and to see if we can't mesh them and make sure that we are on the right path. I personally, and I think it's not broke, we shouldn't try to fix it. But I think if we need to go to that, then maybe we do look at the nominee. Thirty-six dollars doesn't sound a whole lot per Saturday, but maybe a thousand dollars, it sounds like a lot for an organization that is breaking even, if that, every, every year.
I think we made two thousand dollars this last year.
So, but I also think, I feel in a better spot today than I do last year, because we're well ahead of when the market, when you have your meetings, I think that's...
Our meeting is Saturday. And so that's why I'm here.
Just talk myself out of this.
That's why, I think if there's any major changes, I need to talk to my vendors about raising their rates and stuff like that. So that's why I tried to get this going earlier than here.
So I'd like to see if possible, what the average expense for us to operate that pavilion a month is, and then if we could, you know, prorate that to an hourly or a half-day fee schedule. That way, at least our bare costs are covered in the event that we can't bill in Counselor Hyers' direction. So can, can we get that information by the next?
Yeah, I don't know how much information we'll actually have, because there's not a lot of operational cost to it, but I'm sure there's a utility bill or something, or the occasional lighting or something. We can try to look at a period when maybe the market's active or something.
Yeah. We'll try to see. It's got to be a small...
That's why I'm saying, I don't really know what dates we'll be able to provide, but we'll try, certainly. I'm not sure, we've had to do a little maintenance already and that kind of thing on it, we'll kind of blend that in as well. And thank you for mentioning that, because it gets lost a little bit, that we had divergent legal opinions. And whenever we have an opportunity, I'm always going to swing at it to try to make it as intensive as possible for an organization.
It's in a room, and then you never get...
This last year, we had forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yes. They don't all show up at the same time, thank God. We would not be able to do them on day.
Get it bigger.
On average, we have about twenty-five to thirty.
Okay.
The other page that I gave you was our sales for the year, and this is what you're getting sales tax on, is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Is that, okay, that's the full nine and, nine and a half? So is that where you, how you did the comp?
Yes, because everybody, when you do your sales tax reports, regardless of where you live, you still have to put in the city and county.
I just wanted to be sure that you weren't breaking that down to the three and a quarter city, actually. Gets a lot of that state and county, and...
You're right, you're right.
Okay. And I was understanding, well, wait a second, we need to have a market every day if we're making that kind of money off the market.
At least for our sales, hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, okay. Counselors, do you all want to take no action this evening and bring it back after you got a chance to give us some input and maybe try to cobble together some data?
And if you have your meeting, I know unfortunately, it's not going to be settled tonight, but maybe that's something to talk about with the vendors. Because I think you kind of see where Counselor Holmes is, and say, that's probably the max, it's not going to go above that. So it could be somewhere between here and there.
I don't think that we have a, I don't think we're going to have to change our way of going to do the thousand dollars. I would appreciate it if it was less than that, though.
Of course. Well, we'll take no action this evening, then, and we will come back with something on the twenty-second, third, or fourth, just to make a holiday gets in the way at the mid-month, so we'll be a little later than normal. But whenever that meeting's set, we'll bring this back and hopefully get some resolution before you then.
Thank you very much. Everyone of you.
Counselors, unless you have an objection, we will move along to item seven. Hearing none, let me thank the planning and development director for thinking ahead and planning to lower the temperature in the room. It's warm in here. Item seven is discussion of possible action. The higher, Michael Green, CPA, has the auditor for fiscal year 2017, eighteen, for the city of Tallahassee. Deanna?
Senator Packard, it was an engagement letter from Mike Green. It outlines the cost, but basically says it would be between seventeen-five and twenty-three thousand. The filing fee, which is our responsibility, would be a hundred dollars. I wouldn't expect his to be up in the twenty-three thousand range, but he always makes sure to cover himself. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir, good to have.
Or maybe submitted just to tag that later than what we typically are, and there is a reason for that. Just so you know, Mike, Mike Green had a daughter that passed away, and it gets...
When did that happen?
It happened six, six to eight weeks ago. I can't remember the exact time frame.
And then Mr. Spire's also had a personal situation arise?
His father passed away.
Time to his father, it's the holiday season for white people. Grant, I'm not going to lie and exaggerate every word of this, because I know a lot of this is standard for audit contracts, but I didn't notice on page twenty-three that we've given Mr. Green a deadline to complete the audit, and this is something that we've discussed before in previous file engagement contracts and previous compilation contracts. So what did you suggest?
Well, you know, I would always suggest that we, we can't go back in time, obviously, but it'd be nice to have it done before, even last year, clearly, to put some deadline on. And I can't speak to Mr. Green, since he's not here, on what would be reasonable for that. But yeah, it's good to have some form of a deadline.
Has Mary completed the compilation as a financial thing?
She has not completed it, but he has been working on it. Again, his situation kind of got in the way a little bit.
Okay. Oh, I completely understand for both of them, both of them.
Right, and I understand that, too. That's part of the problem for setting a deadline, too. We can't control the other women getting the work things after that.
Right.
Do we have the audits from our component units, hospitals, public works, public works?
No, we do not.
Okay.
And I have sent a request to those individuals.
I think, I mean, TBW had completed theirs in November, is that right?
They did.
Okay.
Except for that, it was in November.
And I would presume that hospitals... Okay. And I bet the hospitals... And then Mr. Spire's also had a personal situation arise?
His father passed away.
Twenty-fourth of July, it's the holiday season for white people. Grant, I'm not going to lie and exaggerate every word of this, because I know a lot of this is standard for audit contracts, but I didn't notice on page twenty-three that we've given Mr. Green a deadline to complete the audit, and this is something that we've discussed before in previous file engagement contracts and previous compilation contracts, so what did you suggest?
Well, you know, I would always suggest that we, we can't go back in time, obviously, but it'd be nice to have it done before, even last year, clearly, but to put some deadline on, and I can't speak to Mr. Green since he's not here on what would be reasonable for him. But yeah, it's good to have some form of a deadline.
Has Mary completed the compilation as far as she can?
She has not completed it, but he has been working on it.
Okay.
Again, his situation kind of got in the way a little bit.
Oh, I completely understand for both of them, both of them.
Right, and I understand that too. That's part of the problem for setting a deadline too. We can't control the other women getting work things after that.
Right.
Do we have the audits from our component units, hospitals, all public works, all public works?
No, we do not.
Okay.
And I have, I have sent a request to those individuals.
I think, I mean, TBW had completed theirs in November, is that right?
It's been good.
Except for then, it was in November.
And I would presume that hospitals. Okay, and I bet the hospitals are completed by statute, and so sometimes they drag it into January before we get those, and we can't even really begin without them, and so it's, it's always something that kind of slumps us, that we will get it done as quickly as we can, or Mr. Green and Mr. Spire will.
Mayor, can you please remind me again what's our due date by statute?
It's Janu-, I'm sorry, December thirty-first. You have to have it done by the end of the calendar year, or they start dressing to kind of withhold your fuel tax. They, they don't give it away. It's the year that once you turn in your, your audit, so we get it in March or April or something, all that's there and it shows up, but they just try to put a carrot on the end and speak for you.
So technically, where are you past that?
About five days, seven days.
Right, 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 five. Let me just get them out there, because, okay.
They also know the situation that, that both of our auditors are, are under.
Right, right, oh, I understand that. Nobody's upset about that at all. I just needed in the past that it's been something that hurt us by not having a deadline in there.
Yes.
And so that's why they didn't want us to put ourselves in that same predicament, so.
Do you know, has he spoken with you about how long he's been in this meeting, once he has all the components and all?
When he has everything that he needs, he's very fast. I, I would feel very comfortable in saying that he would be able to complete it in two to three weeks.
He's done our audit pretty consistently now for several years, I think.
Yes, I've called, it's been.
He was very fast last year, because I think his audit, we were waiting on the compilation, but as soon as that was done, it was almost in like the next month. Are you having an audit? Just don't try to bring them on during tax season. It slows them down. We get it now, they'll get the data two and four, and then I think everything's fine.
Do we want to table this and give you a chance to speak to him and kind of get a better deadline, of what he thinks? We can wait two weeks.
I would prefer not to table it, because I'd like for there to be able to be movement taking place as soon as it's in very as finish.
This isn't quite a legal opinion, but I've heard you all to set a date. You can always come back and amend the date out further if issues arise, but set them on a timeframe, it's a, you know, the city's.
Did we set Barry on a date? Because I don't, if it'd be fair, set the other one on the compilation, something Tyler doesn't have that.
I think I was thinking I missed him.
I don't know how in-depth Barry's actually might think he started, but I don't know if he's fully running what he did, so.
I have this, that we did not put a deadline.
We just had a, a beginning date, right, and the beginning date for.
I'd recommend we move ahead, and then there can be some kind of communication between me and Dana and myself, and we can get something, you know, even an interview on the side, that you can give us a hint as to when it might be completed. I really would, like Dana said, to keep movement forward on, on getting our audit done. It's a statutorily required thing, and we do it every year, but we're always a hair behind, and we're doing our best to kind of keep those little turns, so that'd be my suggestion.
Or we could kind of go with Grant's recommendation, just pick a date, and we can always come back and modify it later.
I suppose if that's what you, you want to do.
Well, then I will make a recommendation that we approve the engagement letter with Michael Green as submitted with the, to include a deadline of February fifteen, two thousand nineteen. Sound like a good day?
Comes off early, but, but we.
Well, I mean, we're going to modify it, and we'll have two, two more meetings, three more meetings before then, so three more opportunities to change our mind and.
First instance, we're waiting on TPFA, TP.
Well, let me, let me say this too. I do need to ask for a second. Sorry. Yeah.
February twenty-eighth?
She made a motion, she wanted to amend your.
I can amend my motion that it's February twenty-eighth, or we can change it to March fifteen?
Well, I would say closer to fiscal year end, but just, but that's up to you all. I'm not trying to pressure anybody. I'm just saying that there'd be no reasonable reason why either of the proceedings would be done throughout tax season, then come up with a trajectory.
Right now, I've got a motion on the floor, unless you'd like to amend it for February fifteen.
I will happily amend my motion to, do you want me to go with June twenty-eighth? Grant?
You're not a counselor, so I can't tell you that. If that's not, just a legal question, but I have Friday's.
That would be helpful for me on my going. Do you want to do that? Or we can start with May thirty-first, if we can always come back and change it to June twenty-eighth?
I'm just waiting on you to amend your motion, Counselor.
I think I'm just going to have paid May the thirty-first. We can take a vote.
We will do that momentarily. I have a motion to approve the engagement letter with Michael Green with the addition of a deadline of May thirty-first, and that's prolonged. Is there a second? One second. Second from Councilor Hires. Are there any other questions or comments?
Hey, you got anything, let me put on that.
Well, this is an audit on fiscal year that ended June thirtieth of eighteen, not calendar year eighteen. So this is going to be a full year behind.
If you were to take it full time. We have no reason to think that he would, but right, and I, this is a pretty unique case, it wouldn't take very that long.
Well, I can allocate ten, because the IRS shut down, or if it'll be shut down, it might be. Well, this might be their season to be a novice pick, kicked out.
Somebody had a motion right there.
Are we still where we can talk, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, there's a motion, there's a second, and now we're just in entertaining, it's about yours.
Sorry, Lainey, is there, I mean, did you, May thirty-first, you think is way off the pace?
It needs to be completed as soon as possible. I mean, when I was doing audits, I, I would try and pre-prepare, and I would be, try and do part of it in March and April of the current year, and, you know, a lot of the auditors would be, this, this would be going into the next fiscal year, preparing to do their audit.
Not technically, not on May thirty-first.
Close enough.
I stepped into a situation where the audits were behind, sir.
Yeah.
I don't think you might blame me in any.
And I do believe that, that Mary has been working pretty diligently on, on getting the compilations I completed.
Counselors, any other comments?
I've worked with Mary a lot of years, and with Michael, so I think they're both going to do the best they can, given what they're currently going through.
Clark gives her own call.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Cobs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a discussion and possible action related to actions or inactions of current mayor, Counselor Bliss.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Mayor. You've got here a little packet brought up here, and it contains in it section sixty-eight of the charter. If that first page is a double-sided piece of paper, if we flip to the backside, you'll see a few, a few of the subsections I have highlighted, and within that packet, you will find a, you know, minutes from previous council meetings with color-coded highlights for the subsections that I believe have been just not closely adhered to. And I tried to pitch things that I was directly involved in, so I had more input knowledge of them, and if anyone has any question, I'd be happy to go over, say questions with you. One thing I would like in particular is increased communication between the mayor and the council. Towards the end of the packet, there's, there's updates from the mayor, which are much appreciated, and, but just sporadic in their implementation. I know it's been an issue of some time back with Counselor Weston and Counselor Spire, and, and I would, in a perfect world, I would like to see an update at least as often as every regularly scheduled meeting, though I know that may be a fifth prohibitive, so if the rest of the council would like, I'd like maybe every two months to have a regular update from the mayor, as to as the goings-ons of the city. So the emails are not complete, they're just showing the date that they were last received. Is there a number solid?
There's a lot of reading, Counselor Bliss.
Well, that's what I highlighted. I mean, you don't read all the time, just a little paint on it, and it'll be.
Well, yes.
Well, in particular for increasing communication from, from the mayor's office, and also I'd like to see, in particular, the range of date ordinance be, be adhered to as per the charter. As far as the things that I've put on and then railroaded on, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's fine, but it's still been something that the council has put forward, saying that, you know, we'd like this to progress, and it's been, you know, put on the back burner and basically ignored, so. So, so as I said previously, I would like to see communication from the mayor's office. Personally, I would like to see points for regularly scheduled meetings, but if we feel that's too much, then once in two months, I think it would be sufficient, but it's been far too long since we've had any kind of update, and I'm speaking as the, the council, you know, all of us keeping some information on, on what's going on, and I got people asking me stuff, and I, I can't, I just have to refer my budget book in advance to be able to tell them anything. So those updates are important, and I do appreciate them, but we haven't got one in quite some time. I usually pick a phone callin' about every day. Yeah, I understand that, but then again, it doesn't say in the charter that I need to pick up the phone and call the mayor, but it says that he needs to inform the council of the city's needs, and it's been an issue before, and I'm just saying, you know, keep, keep, keep the updates coming, don't, don't stop, and let's get it more regular. But then again, you know, we don't answer to the mayor now, so. Right, we keep up to date on the city, though. If I got a question, I'll pick up, usually got a notice, a head-up, and then get them to.
I don't want to fall into a pattern of inaction, but I'm trying to stay as quiet as I possibly can, and let you all decide what it is you, you like to do. Nobody picked up on my call.
I don't think there's a motion, so I say it's moving on to the next time.
So that's an objection?
Counselor Bliss, did you have an idea for a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that, that we receive regular updates, no more than two months apart from the mayor's office, and if that happens to be from your administrative system, as long as it's kept clean by you, I mean, I understand people get those in, and we have seen it out sometimes, but that will be my motion. No more than maybe two months.
You mean not less than, not less than?
Thank you. Not less than two months.
Oh, half a second.
A motion from Counselor Bliss, and a second from Counselor Long.
So how do you want that, what, hold on, you want that down later, or you want that?
Well, do you see the emails that are in private view in the packet, Mr. Cobs?
See what?
Do you see the emails in private view in the packet, Mr. Cobs?
You just want the email?
I mean, that, that's sufficient, isn't it? I mean, they sent that to everybody, that's worth the pass, and there's no sense in re-inventing the wheel, I just, I just love that.
I mean, if, I can take that informally, and just continue to do the emails, if that's what they prefer.
Is there a better way, or you would prefer to do it?
No, I, I used to try to bring written copies, and I think, I guess I did, it was Goldilocks porridge, because I, when I came in with a lot of written information, I was being told I was flooding the council at one point.
I remember that.
And so I tried to, it's, it's difficult with, it's a moving target, but I'm more than happy to continue to provide those, just let me know from time to time that you've received, but they don't really ever get much back either. So I didn't even know honestly if they were, were being read, but I, I can certainly continue that trend, considering that whatever you all want to have, whatever we consider.
Grant, does the motion need to clarify email?
I don't think so. I would clarify that, obviously, we don't want to have a subject of ourselves standing over meetings or anything, so it's just a one-way, you know, communication or discussion as to the items.
What I typically had always done was put, you know, one counselor in, or maybe it was not even a counselor, I think I put someone, and I can't remember who, in the two fields, and then everyone else, the counselors, in the blind carbon field, and that way, if anybody made a mistake of hitting, you know, reply all, that kind of thing, it wouldn't end up going to every counselor. I wanted to make absolutely sure that hitting the wrong button wouldn't lead to, you know, that kind of problem, so we try to be very careful about that.
That caveat, there's no issue legally, and whatever problem it is.
I choose where.
I don't know where. One of the things outside of the realm of really what happened with the city, I mean, I think we get regularly updates from department heads, from Jason, from people. I mean, this isn't even the latest, I mean, they just sent one two weeks ago, a week ago, that had an update.
On appropriate purpose.
My only issue, I mean, and I don't think even the mayor would be against it, we passed it, much the mayor's against it, but do we, I mean, do we pass a, a motion that says this is what you have to do, and then?
Well, there's been no clarification, there's been no clarification what the update consists of, so we know about that, if that comes up, I mean, okay, it can be nothing really new. Have a good weekend.
I played some Thursday.
So, quite frankly, I, I think you're asking for some mechanism to get an, an update, if he has one, and he's, it sounds like he's willing to do that.
Well, I trust that he'll share the information, I, you know, I think he has to forget it out there, but it's one of the issues, because I don't think he's just going, nothing to report, I mean, I've never seen that of the mayor, so I don't know, is there a, is there an issue?
And if you all don't mind too, I'll probably try to go above and beyond like I had done before, which is, we've got a, a Google account we can use to drive, and for a long time, we were going to significant effort to try to put some contracts and things in there, and we're trying to make sure that, you know, you all have those things, the early drafts, as massively possible could, I get them to you, and that worked way better than email, because it overcame some of the problems that the attorney was mentioning, and they were, they were just accessible almost from, even if you had an email client, and, you know, I kept asking if, you know, if that was working, if that was working, and you were told, well, no, I haven't had a chance to look, I haven't had a chance to look, I haven't had a chance to look, and between me and my assistant, it was quite a bit of work to, you know, scan those in if they needed it, or whatever it was, to put them in there and, and all that, but we'll try that right again too, because I think that's a, a quick and easy way to give you correct information that many times has been asked for, to give it, but at the same time, we'll probably remember, just load into that repository, our repository, and, and make sure that it's available as fast as possible. Just promise me you'll look at it, and we'll continue to, you know, get it out there.
Do we have to have a Gmail to access that?
No, I can make it accessible to anybody. It's all public records, so it's typically what we would do, is we'd just send you the share link, and, and you may recall, when it first came on, we had, you know, said, hey, this might be a good time to try to change up the way we're providing that, that data, and. And we gave it the share link, I think, a couple of times in the email, but I, I don't have a way on Google Drive. It's a free service to, you know, track number of views or anything. I just know that it seemed like much was being viewed, and even when, when asked, it didn't seem like very many people were accessing, so we kind of pulled back on that, but we can go back to that too. We'll, we'll do whatever it is that's necessary, make you sure, feel certain that you're informed. Like, I think that, you know, a couple of councils already feel it, so.
As long as it's not like a phantom bond drive that we were promised with our new website that hasn't been there. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with an email if we want to take a step further, you know, that's fine as well, but as long as it's very potential.
And that I could track. We did create the website, and it got like, I think, six views in, I want to say about six months, and again, it was pretty labor intensive to put those scans out there, and I was doing that all my time. And I, I did have to give that up. I mean, I paid for the day name. I was doing the scanning with my own hands and trying to make sure that that transparency was available. In fact, I just looked at it last night and did some things that actually disassembled the very last components of it, but I had to quit putting the time into it, because no one was looking. That I can track. No one was there.
Well, that was supposed to be available on, on the webs, the website services that we purchased a couple of years ago from City Plus.
Were you talking about the one that we had promoted as far as bond transparency or the?
Well, yeah, I mean, you were working on, off the topic here, but you were working on one that would hopefully transfer over to the City Plus, and that was one of the big pushers behind getting that web platform was to be able to do all that stuff.
I really feel like now I can look at Jamie Murphy, our public relations person, the, the website, the control system, the backend, the management system, where just now the board will feel really, really nimble with it. And it adds, has added a lot of new features, and yeah, that data can be made available as quickly as possible. In fact, didn't I even mention that I'm getting some of that back out there for, for probably about a month ago or something? And last night, looking at that old site, what little vestiges remain of it, that was actually kind of in the back of my mind, that let's see what's there and see if it can get transferred. Yeah, there's a lot of bond information and everything out there that could be, could be really easy to move over since we started, should not pile it up, so it's out there.
Jason, I just checked my email real quick, just to see kind of the last time when I got one of those updates, and the last one I see on my email is August, and so that's probably what Councilor Bliss was talking about. As Stephen mentioned, he got one recently.
I mean, there was one on the wisely property.
Yeah, the wisely August bit.
Specific update on, on a property.
Yes.
And we get those from time to time. I mean, that's, you know, that's one thing, but then we get a kind of a more overview.
About four nights, three or four nights.
There was one that just came out, like one, two weeks ago, and it was like, haven't done this.
Can you see it from six feet?
Yeah, it's entirely possible.
Well, I put it all, well, I put it all in the blind card.
If I'm setting it to death, I could.
Well, I put it in the blind card and spot, so you actually can't see, but I'll, I'll try to make sure that I didn't have an error of omission or something, but, but I, yeah, we, we state the greater contact, and so, but I'll, I'll try to hit this metric if that's what the, the council prefers.
Somebody from IP is here that can reset my transport right now. Because that's gonna have to happen, and I'm not even gonna do that.
But I'd argue that it actually is less frequent than the communication that I have with, you know, some of these, so, but we'll do what we can. If you all want to go that route, I think we had a, a motion and a second. Do you have any questions or comments? I guess we'll call this.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
No.
Councilor Ayers?
No.
Mayor?
Do you think I kind of presented the implication when I played the silent game? No.
Motion carried.
All right. We'll move on to item number nine, which is discussion of possible action on the intersection of Bluff Avenue and Shawnee Street. Councilor Bliss?
I, your mayor, you have to say I've had a few conversations about this with people and understand, so, and approached by a number of people asking what the heck were we thinking on that thing, and I've, you know, been bombarded a few times by traffic. It's, it's, if you're heading eastbound on Shawnee Street, it's somewhat of a, of a lost sight triangle if you're trying to even continue straight on Shawnee or to turn back north on Bluff, so do we have any plans or can we make plans to take up that traffic control device there, that triangle in the middle of that intersection? I think the people that, that created that intersection of that road years ago had that in mind when they made it as wide as they could, given traffic ample space to be able to continue east on Shawnee or to be able to turn back north on Bluff without being, you know, impeded by a sight triangle or oncoming traffic, because I've seen traffic going every which way up and down that, that debacle there, so can, can we do something about that?
We had had a conversation, I think, a couple of weeks ago, where I'd even suggested kind of chopping off a part of it, you know, to create a little more lane space if you were turning north, north, excuse me, on Bluff. But I think that after consultation with engineer and maybe a street, I honestly don't remember.
The problem with turning north is you're blindsided by the vehicles coming over the hill, so if you turn left, you're not gonna be able to see cars coming over that hill at that speed that they're traveling. I understand that, but there's a difference between being pointed to the south and then having to turn back to the north as opposed to being? Yeah, I just to keep you from turning to the north, because if you turn to the north, you could get broadsided because? So, did we do any traffic studies or reengineering to change the flow of traffic?
Actually, we have our engineer that designed the project with us this evening. If he wants to speak to that. We had a, a transportation expert in, and Mr. Kelly took that input from that person and, and tried to come up with something to take a dangerous situation and address it, and I'll let him do that now.
Councilor Bliss and Councilor, and Mayor, I appreciate that you're trying to speak on this issue. The reason that was designed that way was strictly to limit the, the flow of traffic coming east on Shawnee to make a right turn only, and it is because of sight distance. It has poor sight distance. It had a real wide throat to begin with, and so it was kind of a free-for-all intersection, so it needed some guidance. The idea and the intent was to make it a right turn only if you're coming up the hill on Shawnee Street. No lefts, no strays or anything, and it's a right turn only. And as you're coming along, uh, uh, Bluff going south, you can turn right and come down there, or the people across the street where it lines up with the other Shawnee, they can come straight on the cross and come on down through there. But we're trying to prohibit or limit the people that are turning left onto Bluff Avenue from eastbound Shawnee. That was the intent.
So, so what was the crash data that made us want to do that?
Get something crash data, and there might be some crash data, I don't know, you can ask, uh, your chief.
Well, if it's not broken, fix it. I mean, I just.
It's sight distance. It's mechanical. It's the, it's a horizontal curve coming into that intersection from, from the south on, along Bluff Avenue, along with a vertical curve, so it's very poor sight distance, so that was the reason that it was limited to that kind of configuration.
Okay, and it's big on that road?
Twenty-five.
The theoretical speed on that, on that, on that thoroughfare. Yeah, I think the, the consultant that we had, Carol, Mayor, I see her out in the audience, Carol Choate, I think you ran around with us one day with, I'm surprised, Dan Burton. You know, he, he immediately, you know, said, hey, that this is a, this is an issue. And he wasn't entirely wrong. I mean, he was, you know, swinging in and out of there really, really fast, and he observed that, and I would imagine those native drivers were like, well, yeah, that's what we do, but he saw it as an issue, and the engineering standards that we, you know, designed roads by also solved a mathematical problem, and so that was the, that was the resolution, at least the one that we're attending. It wasn't just pulled out of the sky, is I guess the point there.
So, that's, all right. So, no intentions to do anything other than to look at?
Uh, I, I don't have any intent at the moment. We wanted to see how it worked out after they painted it. I mean, I tested that they kind of altered a little, but I think the contractor, maybe even Kelly, they, they said, on that island and all those things. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Rogers?
If you're gonna leave it that way, where you can't go east on Shawnee out of the park, is that what I understand?
Whoa.
You cannot go, if you want to go east on Shawnee, you cannot go out of the park, up the hill and east on Shawnee.
Okay, you mean, you can't go east on Shawnee after you get to the top of the hill? Okay.
Is that, which would mean if you drive into the park and you think you can go on Shawnee, that the way you set it up, you can't go east out of the park up the hill? Is that correct?
I believe what he said, where he's trying to limit the left turns.
No, he said he wanted to stop there from being a left turn because of the sign. I'm just saying, if we're gonna do that, there's gotta be some signage put up, because your reaction is if you go through the park, you think you can go on to Shawnee Street, and what I'm hearing is that that's not what is supposed to happen. Is that correct?
There should be an arrow and a sign saying right turn only as you approach that triangle.
There's a big stop sign, but it doesn't, I didn't see anything that said you couldn't turn right.
There should be an arrow on the ground. I think there's actually two of them.
I can't speak to the sign, but I think it's supposed to be there, but I do know the arrows are.
I think she's talking about before you go up the hill.
You can go out east.
At the bottom of the hill, there should be a sign that.
I'm talking about once you're in the bottom area of the park.
Yes.
And you want to go, say you want to go up the Presbyterian Church.
Okay, you can go east on Shawnee till the top of the hill, and then the, I'll leave it to the engineer to explain how?
How you're gonna get on to?
The maneuver goes to the left to get back over to Shawnee.
How you're gonna get to the church?
Presbyterian Church. As a random, you know, kind of.
From Shawnee, you're gonna have to go on, on Bluff, and then go back into the neighborhood, back to the left, which you're, you're required to take a right turn on Bluff Avenue.
And that's, that was a safety factor. You know, it's a safety consideration.
On crash data, though, we have no idea what, what the numbers are. I mean, I, I get the mathematics, but then again, you know, if we've had one crash over ten years there, then I would say that, you know, probably overthinking the scenario. If, if we've had fifty, then yeah, absolutely put up the barricade, whatever we gotta do to protect life and property, but I'm just not sure, and again, I'm not sure that the data would support our decision, other than the mathematical equation, that's the sight triangle and vertical and this, that, and the other, says that we should do it by itself.
Well, I'm not, I'm not particularly.
As an engineer, I've taken oath to protect the safety of the public, and, I mean, I'm, I don't want an accident to happen there. I hope there hasn't been any, and I hope that their neighbor isn't.
We hope to prevent.
Right, right. So, I mean, I just looked at the intersection as it was, as it laid in the field, and ran my calculations and said, you know, this, we cannot let people go straight or turn left off of Bluff Avenue the way that it is, because it's too, it has too bad sight distance back to the sound.
And we made a promise when we designed these roads, that we would do it according to the best, you know, the traffic engineering science could, could do, so we, we let it, I'm sorry, say that again. From the common sense of just following the best standards that traffic engineering science has, has laid down, and so we rely on the consultant and the engineer to tell us what that is. And admittedly, it does probably interfere with that convenient, you know, left turn that we've all become accustomed to.
If you're gonna leave it that way, shouldn't you put some signage at the bottom of the hill?
We can probably do that.
That says you can't go on to Shawnee from Shawnee?
Yeah, we can.
You can't go east on Shawnee once you leave the park?
Would it say right turn only at the top of the hill?
Right turn only ahead. And we, and we can certainly try to address that, and if it turns out that, you know, ends up being, you know, more trouble than it's worth, we can certainly revisit it. I'm not like, and obviously you aren't, Counselor, you're just in love with the whole idea, but I think a lot of the, we can hear just results from, we've had decades of people just swinging right on Bluff, but probably more than twenty-five miles an hour, and just things like that, so we relied on the experts to tell us how to address that. And we had two different ones tell us that this is the way, so we, we went with it. But we can certainly add that signage, even if it's, even if it ends up being a temporary thing, we can, we can do that. Yes, sir?
If we change that just to a square intersection, and here it goes to the south, just cut that off, we should go straight across to Shawnee.
That, that's almost, that's exactly what I had kind of halfway brought up that day, but the experts said, well, let's try this first, and so I.
This is a mess.
Well, it's a mess.
Drive over the middle of it, and don't worry about it.
You won't be able to do that for much longer, um, but.
Got bigger truck. We've always gone straight across for a long time, and just cut that south here off, widen down a little bit, and just go across.
I understand, and that was part of my practical, you know, kind of suggestion, but I deferred to the experts that were on the scene, and if it ends up that a change needs to be made, then I, you know, have no problem stepping out there and asking that to be made, and we'll.
It's been a mess for fifty-nine years I've been here.
Yeah, and, and we've just made a different type of mess, is really what happened.
I don't know if you made a better or worse one.
And we're still in the middle of figuring that out. We think.
Looks like it works.
Engineering, sure, than engineering science. Do you have any other questions or comments, Mr. Kelly? Thank you. Just gotta thank you, Ms. Rogers, very quickly.
If we're gonna be this detailed about the sign, the sight of the street, then I suggest we take time to go to all of the intersections and where bushes are blocking the street, we get rid of those. If sight is.
Be careful what you ask for.
I know.
I mean, I'm.
But I mean, we've got areas where, oh, you can look to the south and you can't see a car coming because there's a, a real pretty bush there, so if we're gonna worry about the hill in this situation, then I think we need to look the whole town over for places where you can't see, because it's all over.
And we resolve those situations as they arise as best we can, and that's what happened here, and we are certainly open to whatever, you know, reports you'd like to give us of those kinds of scenarios. We actually, Commissioner Riles probably attends to how often we do actually go out and, and cut away growth to make stop signs visible and to clear out the sight triangles and make sure rideaway is clear, and, I mean, that's sometimes why we're so hardcore about our rideaway clearance, when people put garage sale signs and things out there, because of issues exactly like this, it can create a, a danger. And sometimes it seems like we may be being a little hardcore about it, but we've had incidents that happened with campaign signs, for that matter, and ground scale signs and other obstacles, so we, we try where we can. All right, unless there is an objection or a motion that's put forward, we will move on. Saying, hearing none, then we'll take no action on item nine, we'll go to item ten, which is discussion of possible action on update of skate park. Councilor Bliss?
Thank you, Mayor. Curious when that thing's gonna be completed.
But, uh, what, what part?
We'll join the bowl to the rest of the park, um, and, yeah.
The, the.
Joining the hole to the rest of the park for?
I mean, definitely an intent for.
It's an intent, plan to, but the money that was beside was not to join them. Well, that, that's, well, I thought the, the alternate bid that we did in November, we sat in here and it was told to us that, that you would be able to come out of one and skate right into the other one once the work was completed.
And we intended to do that, and then the design didn't work out, and the cost would have skyrocketed, and we would have been back for another chain order and all those things, so.
The cost would have skyrocketed, add ten feet concrete to connect?
It was a lot of those, it was a lot of those to make the grade, to be able to connect, because of the different grades between the lower portion and the bowl, the old pool feature, and there were drainage issues as well, there's.
That we were supposed to fix, so I, I suggest anybody, you know, go to YouTube and check out that video and see exactly what was said on the sixth of November, two thousand seventeen, that alternative to the skating.
Well, nobody is going to even try to deny that we probably said that. That was the intent, and the, the design time, it became impossible to. And the design time, it became impossible to actually finalize it that way. And they ended up doing something with that money to do something else. I can't even remember now, like, as a, you know, hey, this is gonna end up requiring a change order, do you want us to go for one? And I don't remember what happened, but they, they put those resources into something else in the park. We don't even deny that that was what was said, it was just a design time change and we didn't want.
They asked us to have an update on that back there.
You're getting it tonight, I suppose. Hey, that's, hey, I tell you what, that's a beloved project, and I, if you wanna nitpick that great project.
I'm just curious when they were, when it was gonna be finished or when they were gonna be connected. I was under the impression that they were going to be connected.
That was the, it was pretty common knowledge that we encountered that issue. And it's a wonderful thing. I think we've got some people here that would attest to that tonight.
I'm rather not, man, I'm just curious what's gonna be done.
You are a dark cloud for a silver lining, aren't you? It is dark. And.
What was saying, the proof that we need to dig is the restroom. That's the one thing, and we're committed to doing that. The budget didn't allow this year, and so.
I, I think with every single project, you could probably nitpick something where a bolt didn't go in, or they moved something, or whatever.
We actually are working on the restroom. We've changed the design a couple of times due to the amount of money that's in the budget. And there's actually another meeting tomorrow with the architects to do this for the restroom.
The restroom?
Using that old building and making it so that there's restrooms out there. But we're not gonna rent it out to the state shops anymore. We've looked at it, but there's not enough money, the money we originally planned, so we've kind of had to change the plans, that what we originally was, we were looking at.
We're going to, we're gonna put it out for proposal. Yeah, it's gonna happen. And right now, and if those plans have changed, then I need it in that day, because that's not what's, that's not what's gonna happen. We're gonna put that out for proposal.
I'm just going off the last information I had. Thank you. Was the fence, the old fence.
The old fence?
Well, the reason we were leaving it is because we expected to move right into the construction rehab of the restroom. And so we were gonna leave it as, you know, security, safety for when they start working on the building. Probably come down in us and escalate.
I don't know, it sounds like Councilor Bliss wants to finish out that project, the restrooms. You remember what a problem the old fence had to do today, the restrooms?
The restroom was $220,000. We did change the budget, so we weren't able to do the, yeah.
The, the center part.
Yeah. The money that was on there to do the whole thing, this during the month. And that's why the redesign.
See, what do I have to answer? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Can you repeat what you just said? I had a trouble hearing you, of why it wasn't completed. Mr. Carr?
The budget, the amount of money that was budgeted that we were looking at, we changed it. The money was changed, money wasn't there, we didn't have enough money coming in, we had to use the money for other things. So there's enough money there to do the restrooms.
Yeah, thank you, I just couldn't hear you. Any other questions or comments, councilors? There isn't a desire for action, we took no action on that item. And move on then to item number 11, which is discussion and possible action on current status of each fourth street. Councilor Bliss?
Thank you, Mayor, again. I'm inquiring as to the status of the project, East Fourth Street from the bridge to the bypass. We've got some money tied up and getting that ready, and there's ODOT's portion.
ODOT has, oh, I can't remember, it's an 820 match, just I'm guessing that it is about a $1.2 million, you know, fund set aside for us to complete that project. We'd have to come up with their, I mean, what's the math on that? Probably $400,000, whatever it is, to get started. And the problem is, is that we're running into some of the same right of way issues that we encountered on West Fourth Street. We've got about a dozen properties that are still kind of hanging out there. We've got some verbals, you know, things that we could work out with a couple of them pretty quickly, but there are about, it was four, now it's three, three property owners. No, I'm sorry, I apologize. It was four houses, now three houses. That they said, you know, we're gonna tell you in court unless you buy the whole thing. And of course, we're not interested in buying somebody out, just because I guess they see an opportunity. And so negotiations are ongoing with right of way. We may end up having to move in the direction of condemnation in a couple of cases. We don't want to do that. It does delay things, because I have been very hesitant to pull the trigger on that for any project, but that's just me. I don't wanna bully anyone. I always hold up, hold out hope that we can come to a fair and equitable arrangement, but we have encountered one or two instances where that hasn't been possible. And I'm starting to think that that may be the case on East Fourth Street. Once that right of way is acquired, then we'll be able to move the utilities and the state has its money. Confirmed that with the director over there probably six or eight months ago, just to make sure that we were ready to go. And Commissioner, you and I have had a couple of conversations about this within the last couple of weeks, about it and Mill Street probably being a big priority for us in our budget here. One of the other holdups was that, you know, you get these financial statements, you know, each month, if you turn back to the back and look at the Street and Alley Fund, you probably noticed that it has been accumulating, and that's been with some intent, so that we can do what we need to do, with all that match from ODOT's money. Or use it on Mill, I mean, we've got a couple of options that we can play, but we needed the Street and Alley Fund to accumulate enough funding to tackle the project, to buy full of some other places. And it kind of was good to try to have that coincide with what movement we could get out of right of way acquisition. So we're gonna take another swing at that. I've been in contact with some property owners, I don't know, probably three or four of them within the past, I don't know, again, two weeks, probably at that same time frame, you and I have been talking to Commissioner. And I think that we may get lucky in a couple of instances, because a public entity bought some of the problem properties. We were trying for a long time, which Kelly can attest to this, and we thought we actually had it resolved, but upon further review, it didn't work out. Trying to kind of alter the design so that we didn't have to acquire two or three of those problem properties, but we, we just couldn't pull it off and make a good road and make it perfect construction time. And we tried that and couldn't do it, that took a little time, but we are moving as quickly as we can, with the exception of condemnation. And if you want to make a motion to tell me to just engage in that process here tonight, I would be glad to have that decision come from this body and not me, because I try to avoid where possible. Though we are running out of room to maneuver up there, literally in some cases, we didn't want to get it finished.
Yeah, we've got a lot of money invested along that area, and the street's getting worse and worse. It seems like it's been on the back burner for 10 years now, so I'd like to see some kind of progress being made, and I'm glad to hear that there is progress being made.
Would you like to make a motion, counselor or councilors? There's not one without objection then. We will move on to item number 12, which is discussion and possible action requesting update of comprehensive plan. Councilor Bliss?
Thank you, I hear that it's done.
Not done.
What? I talked to Craft and Toll last week, they said we'll be there Monday night with these big old.
It's the draft.
The draft.
Happy New Year, Councilor, Mayor. You do have a draft. I suggest we spend.
No, you don't hear that.
Oh, come on, sir. I'm looking mine. I have electronic copy and all. I'll send the link to everybody. Yeah, it's exciting, it's long overdue. As everybody's aware, we, things are changing rapidly in Toluqua, there's a lot of activity, a lot of development. Some of the new things that they've had to, you know, put into the plan are the Tiff District that we're working on, the realignment of Highway 82 North. You know, there's just, there's a lot of moving parts and to click, save, imprint, you know, we kept being hesitant on doing. The beginning of the document is really the storytelling. It's telling you where all the community input, what it resulted in. This was a plan that was developed by the community. We had a huge turnout to all of our meetings at the Armory, when we were gathering input at our tabletop sessions and community-wide surveys. You know, I think we, for a town our size, we, I think we blew Craft and Toll's mind with the amount of involvement that our community had. I think we were near 800 surveys that were filled out on behalf of this plan-making exercise. The meat of the document is at the end. You can, you'll see about 30 pages of just a list of actions and policies that we can spend the next 20 years implementing. There's some low-hanging fruit and some tough things, you know, that are gonna take a lot of time and a lot of money to accomplish. But it's in the plan, and our communities, who put it there? You know, these weren't ideas that were generated from Craft and Toll, these came from the members of our community. I can't say that out loud. I was proud to have so many people show up at all of our meetings.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a formal presentation on the project?
Yeah, I want you guys to review them and propose any changes or edits or whatever you guys see necessary before we actually bring it back to the doc. But when we're ready, they'll, they'll come back, we'll have a formal presentation and.
What's our deadline on that?
It's, that's, that's up to you guys. You know, if you guys spend the month of January and you like what you see and there's not too many major modifications, I, you know, I think February 4th would be, you know, doable. And again, I can send you guys an electronic copy as well. It's, it's challenging to just sit down and start at the first page and read it today and then cut it down. You have insomnia? Yeah, it might help. You're welcome.
So where are we on the Tiff District plan? I haven't heard anything about that in months.
I don't know if I can talk about that.
So will it be a few more months till?
Well, I just don't know if I can talk about that, but it's agenda, Grant says I can.
Yeah, ask the secretary.
Go ahead, sir.
You can't, if you miss it, it's part of the conference.
Okay. So we have a project plan, draft, that is ready for the committee to review. And when they review it, they're gonna make the recommendation whether or not to send it to this area. And so there's one big feature of that project plan that we're gonna have to get completed before we bring it to this funding, and that's the developer financing assistance agreement. We wouldn't bring that to you guys unless we had all the details about how our money's gonna be spent, because I know that's probably one of the most important features of the Tiff District and questions that you're gonna ask about it, so. So we have a project plan, it's went back and forth. It's, the committee members have been really involved, providing feedback after the meetings of what they would like to see changed, and we've changed those things accordingly, and we have a pretty solid, solid document now. And now it's creating that contractual agreement of our public financing of a private development.
Who's on that?
Oh, God, I'm gonna be lying.
Jeff Reiser, Darrell Combs, he's the chair, he's the counselor. You've got Mike Brown, kind of pivot from the.
Bo-Tech.
Bo-Tech, the superintendent of the Toluqua and Grandview Public Schools, not Bridge, Department of Bridge Public Schools. Ms. Nancy Dyson, which we've talked about, I may need to check and see if statute requires a P and Z member to be on the committee.
She does, she is.
As of this afternoon. You and I, she was on.
Oh.
We haven't had a chance to get it on an agenda or anything, but I'll double-check that, and it sounds as if I just did. And so Ms. Dyson was until this afternoon.
Library.
And, yeah, I can't remember the library representative's name.
Jason Wright as well.
Oh, yeah, I forgot Jason, yeah. And Brian Barry on it?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
How often have they met? Like, how intensive has this been?
I would say four, five, five times. Yeah, as a board committee.
Probably a few side meetings too, like the attorneys and the consultants.
Well, and we've formed committees. But, yeah, we meet with the attorneys pretty regularly, keep pretty close contact with them.
Are they scheduled to meet?
They are. That's something that we have to, we have to schedule. We just, we actually just received the proposal from the attorneys to create that document on Toluqua, the public financing assistance agreement. That wasn't in the original contractual agreement with the attorneys, so that's unfortunate, but it is our first go-around on this. Let's grant, let's kick this out, man. No comment tonight. Well, Tom.
Hell, the Combs has done a good job. Johnson's done, we've just kind of really tried to get all that stuff together. The law firm has, I mean, it's, it's a new process for us.
Just getting everybody together.
Sure, that's, yeah, sure.
Everybody on that committee has a busy schedule.
Yeah, it's busy people.
But, yeah, I mean, some of the numbers, we're talking about the possibility of $180 million worth of private investment. It is exciting. And it addresses some of the things that were discussed in that plan, the desire for more development on the north end of the town, you know, the desire to develop towards the river. What do you guys have to explain? You got any questions?
Thank you. All right, if there's any desire for an action, any kind of action, we'll entertain that motion now.
And if you have any edits, let me know.
Ms. Drew, so very quickly, did you have a comment?
Yes, are you going to incorporate the tax enterprise zone into this comprehensive plan?
We don't have a tax enterprise, is that right? Are you talking about the Tiff, the Tax Increment Finance District?
Yes.
We were just discussing that at length, and yes, that was part of the delay in getting, you know, to draft status, but it's here tonight even with that delay, and so, yes, it is a part of the whole thing. Yes, sir. I guess it's an enterprise zone, it lives part of town, but anyway. All right, no other questions or comments, we'll move to item 13, which is discussion and possible action to hire two dispatchers in police, in the police department. Ms. Pike?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, councilors. The hiring committee consists of Chief Akeem, Assistant Chief Steve Garner, Dispatch Chief Jaylen Stewie, Training Coordinator Randy Tanner, and myself, conducted interviews over pretty much a six-week period. But we did narrow that down and approved two people that we'd like to offer positions to, Dallas Huntley and Bailey Wright. Both of those would be offered the salary, by the way, with the pay grade, and said they'd be at T-112, starting at step one.
She said Dallas Huntley and Bailey Wright at T-112, step one?
Yes, ma'am.
For both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Are you ready for my motion?
I am.
Okay. I will make a motion that we hire Dallas Huntley and Bailey Wright at T-112, step one.
We have a motion from Councilor Long, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor hires? Court gives her roll call.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Nerd?
Yes.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Item number 14 is discussion and possible action to combine the parks and recreation departments along with the necessary structure. The two departments, Mr. Carr and Mr. Bo-Tech and Ms. Pike.
So the plan is to combine the parks and rec. And by doing this, we want to combine the two departments into one department and we will, of the currently budgeted positions within the two departments. By doing this, we better be able to utilize. By doing this, we better be able to utilize the taxpayer dollars. We're looking at approximately a little over $9,000 in savings on the current budget. We're also looking at the savings of approximately $25,000 annually in the turnover and training expenses of the part-time employees and improved asset management. This will also be improved supervisory cohesion and accountability. So if we turn to page, is that fourteen?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So presently, in the Rec Department, in the approved budget, we have thirty-six employees with seven full-time positions and twenty-nine seasonal part-time positions. In the Parks Department, we have a total of twenty-three employees consisting of nine full-time positions and fourteen seasonal part-time positions, which gives you a total of fifty-nine employees, sixteen full-time positions, and forty-three seasonal part-time employees. So the plan is, is to reduce it to forty-eight employees in Parks and Rec, which consists of twenty full-time positions, twenty-eight seasonal part-time positions, and this would be for Snowflake and the pool, which is an overall elimination of eleven positions. The eliminated positions would consist of two superintendents, ten laborers that are at 1099, or, I mean, 999, one laborer at 552, and the contractor position. The added positions would consist of the director, recreation coordinator, an events facility coordinator, a golf manager, and two full-time laborer positions. And if you look, next page.
Are those positions permanent?
Correct.
I mean, not, not temporary?
No, temporary. So any temporary we will have, we'll keep, will be our seasonal. Because right now, we do the tan employees every year for the mow the grass and those type of things. We want to eliminate that and just add two full-time positions.
The two superintendents, are those positions currently vacant?
One of them's currently filled by Charles.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And Charles now would become the director. And instead of superintendent, we would have two rec coordinators and two event facility coordinators under him. So if you go to the next page, do you have the?
This is the last thing.
Okay, so if you go to page?
Twenty-five and twenty-six of your council package?
So on page twenty-five, if you look there, the Squidner's error, where it says Foreman, Arne Uten, he's actually a 114 presently. And then the rec coordinator would be a 115, and so those two are reversed.
Here's just an updated sheet for your package, if you'd like.
Just a question for you guys, when I looked at this yesterday, do the lifeguards, do they get annual pay increases? Do they stay?
No, they stay the same.
Okay. Because I know some of these names I recognize, I've never been with this a lot of years, and I didn't know if that was locked in.
They're the, they're the seasonal, they stay the same.
Okay.
If you look on page twenty-five, you see the names off to the right. So presently, those are the employees that are filling these temporary positions. And we're gonna open it up for an interview process, and so they'll be thrown into the hat to interview for the permanent positions that we're gonna have open.
There's four of the full-time laborer positions that we'll be interviewing for. We'll be posting that like we do any other open positions that we have in the city.
Now, would this eliminate the contract that we currently have with Mike Foreman?
Correct, and he'll have the opportunity to go full-time with benefits.
Okay.
But over the last, is it eight years, do you have those numbers?
Eight years. There has been a total of $307,000 spent on that contract.
And by changing this all, where this will also give us the ability to actually do evaluations
Accountability.
To accountability, hopefully the person to be there every day, those type of things, having a full-time employee.
Three oh seven. Three oh seven, in how many years?
In eight years, I believe, Dana, with that contract.
Well, it's interesting, because if you go back to fiscal year twelve thirteen, before the departments were separated, and then you see what happened the following fiscal year, when the departments actually separated, then they got, they both expanded a little bit. So you go from fiscal year thirteen, fourteen to present, there's been a ninety percent increase in those departments' budgets as far as personnel and salaries and benefits of that nature. Whereas, you take another department, and those increases are about seventeen percent. So, we're saving, you know, $9,000, hey, that's great, but what about the larger issue of the elephant in the room?
If you go back?
Not to be that position.
Understand, did you say twenty thirteen?
No, there's no elephant in the room.
Thirteen, fourteen. Okay, and thirteen and fourteen, we have a sports complex, we have a pool.
Let me intervene, because I mean, I think there's some things trying to be implied. We separated them at my behest, because we had some conversations and we thought that it might be a more efficient way to approach and provide services in the Parks and Recreation Department. They had slightly different missions, we experimented with it. And I think even the conversations at the time, where if it doesn't, you'll come together the way that we want, we'll revisit it in the future. And so far, we have had limited success with that separation. Ed thought he had a better idea, and so I said, I can get with the staff and come up with a better plan. I mean, I'm never gonna close my, I am never gonna close my mind or the door to a better idea just because it isn't mine, and I would never use it as an opportunity to try to go back in time and imply that there was some kind of mistake made or nobody's wanting to admit to the past. This is fine, this is great, if it's better than what we've been doing. Just because it was my idea five years ago, I have no issues with it. There's always a better idea out there.
Well, that's not what I was getting at. What I was getting at is the ninety percent increase over five years.
Oh, that I, oh, I like.
Most of it is seventeen percent.
No, 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 I want to address that too.
Across the board.
I'm happy with that, and I'll tell you why. Are you all happy with the way that the parks, you know, look, the way the Recreation Department functions? Not necessarily. And you know what they need? Those resources. And every time we've ever tried to provide them, there's been this argument made, like this mathematical equation, like you picked the engineer portal there, you know, somehow magically resolves the problem and makes it justifiable to say, let's not provide the resources we need to Charles or whoever's in these positions to keep these places clean and safe. They aren't up to par, and we have to fight tooth and nail and at every opportunity to find that dark cloud, that silver lining. If you don't like the idea tonight, Ed and I can live with that, it's Ed's idea. He is a uniform prison man. But then we'll come up with something else. But all we're ever after is to try to make the park system better, not look for an opportunity to try to make the political point.
I'm not trying to make a political point. My, my issue is the unsustainable growth.
No, no, hold on, I'm not gonna let you frame the question or the issue this way. It is absolutely sustainable. Dana, has our reserve increased over the last couple of years? So, our reserve has increased over the last couple of years.
That's because we've transferred excess revenues from the first bond, yeah, and we haven't spent it.
I would say that that's sustainable. I mean, we are increasing our reserve. I asked that question the other day, said, we seem to be on a good track, correct, finance director?
We are.
We are. And you always frame the situation this way. You claim it is unsustainable, when in fact we have sustained it for the better part of eight years. And I will defend that and won't let you continue to frame these discussions that way. I'm no longer going to allow that presumption to be made. Go ahead, councilor, it's all yours.
To back it up, I mean, just look at the past audits and budgets.
Would you like to back up that statement? What do you mean?
Well, I've only got two with me right now, yeah.
So, no? Or? I mean, we're doing well financially. This unsustainable.
Because we keep transferring money from other sources, that's not the moral of the rule.
So? Let me make this point. We find the revenue and the resources wherever we can to make sure our staff has what they need as best we can, and you're always the roadblock, always the roadblock. I'm no longer going to sit there and allow you to phrase it this way. We're engaged in this kind of conspiracy moment. These people need help, they need resources, I'm gonna fight to provide it. You can continue to find the dark cloud, every silver lining. Let's see if you like the idea tonight. Let's fight to make this community better, instead of constantly trying to rely on the math, try to make a point that is disproven at every opportunity.
Sorry, Charles.
That was you, not Charles. Charles is who I'm asking.
Well, I'm saying, sorry, because he's standing here in front of us, while we bicker back and forth.
There's no bicker. Your points are constantly disproven. Counselor hired.
From thirteen to fourteen, because that's where you started, right? Is that when the new pool was built?
Yes.
And was the new pool?
I think Melissa would know. Melissa, when was it built?
I would know, because I passed the bond to get it built. And Melissa did the building, and yes, that was the year.
Because I think that there's probably some indication of labor in that.
Yes.
You know, new lifeguards, it became a new season. And then on top of that, we combined in Snowflake. You know, Snowflake didn't start out as a city event, it started out as the chamber, and the city took it over one or two years after the start. Which then allowed us to do seasonal work, to have to work that ice rink. And so I think that there probably is staff increasing, but I think that that staff increasing came for very specific reasons, not just because we had fifteen people that we wanted to hire, and this is where we decided to hire them. But it also came with revenue generators. So I think if you're looking at the pool over the course of, when it's open to now, the revenue the pool is bringing in is justifying the staff that is now working at the pool. If you're looking at ice rink, I assume.
The ice rink, the ice rink's turn, a small profit the first year has been in the red sense. I don't even know the number.
They're making a profit at the pool and the ice rink.
And I think also, we have learned our lesson, and we're using now some of the lifeguards to then become help at the ice rink and vice versa. Whereas that didn't happen, you know, we brought them on as lifeguard, we dropped them, and then we hired new people to come on and be ice rink people, and then when that was over, we dropped them. Started all over again, so.
It's insanity, you have built and turnover, and anybody in the private sector is always trying to avoid that. These two millions of dollars are trying to determine why people leave and how to keep them. And we budget it in every year.
All these part-time positions we have are hard to fill.
And so I think in theory, I don't know, maybe there is validity to the numbers that we shot out. But I think that only tells half the story. It doesn't tell what actually was going on in the city from that time, and the projects, and the money and the revenue that was being raised because of what we did.
And I would agree, context is always left out of the discussions. And I mean, I heard, I think, Mr. Bernard, maybe in the U's, five junes ago, claiming we were gonna be flat broke, I believe. And it was in the paper and everything, I think we've had five junes since and a growing reserve. And the context is always left out of this, for the naysayers and the people that just constantly want to act like we shouldn't try to innovate. We're punished for dreaming. And I've won and look forward to a new day soon. We're gonna continue to try to make this community better. Providing the resources necessary for people like Charles to get it done. Even if it's not through this pact that Ed's laid out tonight. We're gonna continue to do it.
There was a misquote.
Okay.
I could, coming back to this, I personally, I mean, I personally like this idea and this theory. I'm in mind, the two departments in my head make sense. If you're looking at other cities like Tara, like mine.
They are, I've been a lot of research in a lot of the communities that we compare ourselves with, Sepulveda, Tormores, Sand Springs, McAlister, Ada, they're all combined.
It would strengthen our, the two departments.
It maybe will have to allow us to, I know this is very minor, but it's something I've talked about all the time. Maybe it'll allow us to combine some of our mowing effort, so we're not buying a fleet of lawn mowers for one department and a fleet of lawn mowers for another department and putting somebody on the lawn mower to just mow the park, and somebody on the lawn mower.
To utilize that, that the city already owns.
I mean, so I think that it makes sense. I like the, I like how we've combined it, taking extra consideration to the people that are already in the positions, to make sure that we're doing justice with our city employees. But yet also aligning ourselves to where it allows for future growths. And that's a very visionary, and it's a very, it's a very good vision to look at it that way and to be able to support it, so. I do have some questions about some of the positions, because in my head, I think they're not, it's not as clear-cut, and so I kind of want to walk through that.
Okay.
The reason, the reason we did this this way, we could never get somebody to say they're gonna be here five days during the week, plus work nights, weekends, and holidays. By doing this, you're gonna have an events and facilities coordinator, and then you're gonna have your recreation coordinator. The events and facility person would actually work with the recreation coordinator.
Yeah, it might work the extra hour.
Yeah, between the two of them, you'd have your coverage. Right now, having a superintendent, it's hard to have that coverage, weekends, holidays, nights. I mean, that's a lot of work for one person, and you look at the amount of comp time that happens when you do that, it's crazy.
Sure, so here's my, here's my question. Just because I don't, you know, in the world that I live in, we have like executive directors and the directors supervisors, coordinators, you know, we have that type of thing. So we have director, which I assume is going to be like an executive director of the department overall. And then we have two foremans, which I, my assumption is that we have like one foreman that is over parks and one foreman that is over rec.
Correct.
Okay, and then breaking that down, then you can kind of see where
Then you would have a coordinator, you would have a coordinator that would oversee AMC, the pavilions, Norris Park, and the sports leagues. And you would have a rec coordinator that would oversee the pool and then, and Snowflake. That way you would have one person that has a summer, you know, something going on in the summer and something going on in the winter for both departments.
So my question is, if we're doing, if the foremans are technically higher on the hierarchy scale, then whether we're putting them in here, we're putting them at a 114, and we're bringing the rec coordinators in at a 115. And so.
We have no, that's because we have the market salary analysis, and those, that's what the market salary analysis said. The rec coordinator is a 115 and foremans are 114. I mean, unless we go back and change the market salary analysis, then you can open up the door and say, now, everybody who works at the city can change their job classification and say, okay, you want to be a 115 now? You used to be a 113. We have to go by the numbers that were supplied by the company that we paid all this money to do a market salary analysis. So that's why I plugged those numbers in.
Right, and I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think when we did a market survey analysis, we're looking at like-minded. But my question would be, would we not look at tweaking the job descriptions to make the foreman job description, and since we're redoing some of, since we're redoing the departments, would we not look at tweaking those job descriptions to make that foreman job description more loaded with
If I can answer that.
Responsibilities, the director, things like that. Or, do we not flip them and look at the rec coordinators as that?
Hierarchy.
Hierarchy.
And you've totally changed the market salary analysis based on the job description. You start tweaking the job description, it's totally gonna change the amount of money that they say that person.
Sure, and I don't, I mean, I don't disagree with you, I understand the job descriptions. But I think we did those based upon job descriptions that fit the city at the time. If now we're reevaluating some of the departments, it would, to me, it seems like that would be, this would be a time to reevaluate some of those job descriptions. And even if we have to take them back to a market analysis of, you know, these specific four job descriptions, let's re-rate them and see kind of where they're at to the job description that we have.
The job descriptions were not based on the city requirements, the job descriptions were based on the ten cities that we were compared to. We looked at four cities larger, four cities smaller, and two cities the same size. And so our job descriptions are comparable with pay to those ten cities with that job description. So if we change the job description, and we're changing the and we're changing the pay, and we're changing the description of what that person does.
I think you just said my whole.
No, no, no. I'm thinking you might be talking about cost per person.
If we're, this is the time, and I like the, what we're doing, but I think if we're doing that, we need, we should be strategic about making sure that we're setting the department up the way we want it to be set up, and the way the growth of Talakaw and the growth of this department can be, the leagues, the recreation, the, you know, the future parks, future expansion, not just, these are the descriptions that we have, and so let's plug it in like it is, because this gets us to a end goal real fast, real quick. So I, I like everything that's happening. I just think that we have, I think there needs to be a little bit more discussion about the top of this hierarchy and the way that we do. Because, you know, I'm not, you know, this is a discussion that we've had for a year and a half now about, you know, bringing in the facilities and starting to do Talakaw recreational league sports. And I think this would be a perfect time to start having that conversation and setting the department up to have that conversation.
And have you involved in that one already?
Right. Well, for one in this.
For one year or two.
But now setting ourselves up and getting ourselves ready to have that, to be able to go down that road seems to be a better plan than, let's get this here now, and then we'll figure out the way.
So where you're going on this is on the sports leagues. And I've actually looked at that. And so my plan was to come back at a later date and talk about position, positions, doing sports leagues for the city. But right now, this is just to get what's needed within the parks and rec. But creating positions, I mean, I've got that in the back of my head, but that's not what this is.
Kind of working with what we already have in place and budget-wise.
I think we're speaking the same language.
I think you are.
Maybe saying the same word.
No, I think we're speaking the same language. Are the foremen going to supervise those coordinators?
No.
Okay.
No, they'll supervise the laborers, make sure that everything out in the field is going right, not leaving anywhere.
And you've been involved in these conversations, right? I just wanted to make absolutely certain that Ken was not misunderstood otherwise.
Okay. So just to clarify, the foremen supervise the laborers, and then Charles, as the director, you're going to supervise the coordinators. And then you're also going to supervise the foremen. So you're going to now have just four people that you direct the foremen to.
There's actually more than that. So there'll be the golf, you'll have two rec coordinators, you'll have two foremen. And then we're toying with the idea of doing a reactionary group to where at any given time, now Charles oversees two departments, so he has more people. Now he's got the ability to say, okay, you two people, go here and do some weeding at this location, or go here and do some painting at this location. As where before, it was so hard to try to pull people from one group to the other group. Now Charles has that power to where I pick up the phone and say, Charles, I need you to go out here, and this needs to be weeded or painted today or tomorrow, and that'll happen.
And then right now, even with both the foremen and the rec coordinators being a T-114 and T-115, they still have the same salary regardless of their.
That's because they've been here so long.
Yeah, that's a little misleading, because the one individual that's in that, he was brought in at Step Three, and it just happens to be the same, if you're looking at.
Okay.
Looking, yes.
Yeah, I think that's why I was confused, why council hires was going on about the 14 and 15 when they matched on the supplement.
Because we're looking at people, existing people who've been here for years, and so they've moved up the ladder and they're making more money. It may be that position, but they're quite a few steps up the ladder.
Ladder. They've worked their way up.
And they're going to cap, I mean, at a certain point where the other one won't. I mean, they'll continue to move on. And I think a big, something else, you know, Councilor Long, while you mentioned some of the staff, I think another important aspect that I see in the job description for the director is working with our citizen advisory board, the park board and the rec board. Because I think if we are truly going to be able to establish rec leagues in this city, or in this town, then I think that's, that rec board especially becomes a very important board, and it'll take somebody, you know, that is focused on working with them and allowing them to, you know, keeping them in the loop and allowing them to make some of those decisions. So I mean, I think that's a big portion of another aspect that people.
And if I can just add, when we were talking about the lawn mowers, so the parks department has sixty-two acres of grass, and the parks, and the, let's see, parks has sixty-two and recreation has a hundred and four acres of grass, just those two departments. So.
You love it.
You gotta know it.
You have a question.
Mr. Ackler.
Colonel Ackler. Yes. You sure got on the right track at the end of that. Normally, you kind of flip-flop an organization by figuring out who all the chiefs are at the top. You analyze the task, the performance requirements. And having worked in both the contractor world and at the military level of an organization, you identify the critical tasks that you're going to be performing. If you have a whole group that's cutting grass, why do you have two different organizations supervising? That's my first question. My second question is, what other things are common tasks for your organization that don't require this superimposing of a octopus bureaucracy on top of it? Because you're losing a lot of your capital paying for supervision. But if you reorganized at the grassroots level, pardon the pun, you would be able to have small teams go out. It didn't matter if they were mowing grass in the park, or the athletic field, or around, because they would be independently organized and mobile. And you wouldn't have to have a supervisor there necessarily, except for a, a project manager for each list of projects.
So Colonel, I'm taking, you're happy with this change, if you can handle it.
Just the idea that this, you have these higher-paid people up here, that I don't see that they have a useful function.
Take that.
The span of control, see? The span of control could be helped by the independence of the work team. And the work teams would go out and be assigned, you know, whatever their assignment was for that week, or that day, or whatever.
That's why we took away the two superintendent positions.
Okay, but you still have that managerial overhang here, and that's.
So you're saying we should have two departments without one manager over anything?
No. I'm saying, you organize your workforce so that there's teams of workers that are doing the same job. For example, that would facilitate, if you have people sick, you could move this team over to help that team, you know, or it gives you a lot of flexibility to do the, do the mission.
And I really believe that that is what this is attempting to accomplish, that separation a few years ago, and then creating some silos. And we might not have streamlined to the extent that you would prefer, and, but we're certainly trying to prevent.
Well, it's the managerial, you're retaining these positions.
Yes, we have.
You indicate, because you have, you have a legacy group of people that have been here for a while, and they need to get a promotion, or they need to keep a.
Well, I don't really think that that was the justification, but.
Well, I sounded like it. But anyway, the other thing is, like on the solid waste thing that you have with the next item.
Well, let's wait for that.
What's happened.
Let's wait for that.
That kind of geography.
Hey, Colonel, let's wait for that.
A superintendent of solid waste.
Thank you, Colonel. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have one.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Um, so just to clarify, we were talking about the micro contract, eight, eight years, three hundred and seven thousand dollars. So that'd be approximately thirty-eight thousand three seventy-five per year. And then so eliminating that would be the equivalent of the golf course manager, which is now on the new page twenty-five, in which I did the math really quickly on my trusty cellphone. So that's now going to be forty-nine, two thirty-five per year. So it's actually going to increase the cost of that particular position.
For that particular.
Because it would be contract, obviously there's some cost savings there for us compared to having someone on staff, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. The only difference is, we'll, if it's a full-time position, we'll have control of the person being there five days a week, or seven days.
So the contract we had before did not state hours, or clarify how many hours per week or per year as far as that contractual requirement?
Us feel hard to make somebody, you know, be there every day if they're not full-time employed.
We didn't have our usual mechanisms, you know, enforced.
Okay. So the contract wasn't clear?
It was clear. It was a professional service agreement that, it's been evergreen.
But if they're not employed, it's difficult to say, hey, we're going to write you off. You know, or we can't employ those typical.
Contract.
Well, we, we can do that.
I'm saying that's an option we've done on other contracts, correct?
Oh, absolutely. We can do a nuclear on, I mean, we start firing people right now? I'm kidding.
No, you can't.
Because the golf course brings a lot of different things. So you're looking at leagues, I mean, you look at opportunities, and, you know, many, many years ago, there was, you know, working together with Jersey Horse Club and different things, and get kids involved in golf. And I know that Ed's had a desire to have some more development, like we've done in a lot of the other parks and stuff. And so that was the, you know, the thought behind that, is be able to bring that under Charles, who has a wealth of experience.
Right.
And be able to, to, I mean, when you look at those dollars.
Right.
Right.
That's a good market.
I went in here, so.
All right. So I like this idea. I think that probably we're not going to get to a final conclusion tonight.
Correct.
So maybe we can set this aside. So maybe I'll make a motion to table this item, and maybe we can work in small work groups, so two and two, to.
Right now, we have nobody in charge of rec department to do that.
Well, let me say this. I have a motion to table. I did hear those words. So is there a second to that motion?
I will second your motion.
I'm supposed to like shut her right up at this point, though.
Well, can I just do a point of privilege?
Sure, go ahead, Counsel.
To say that I think that we should work in maybe work groups of two and two, because I think that will get us through to be able to get this back, to get it solidified at the mid-month. That way we have somebody that can, you know, step in. I also wouldn't be, pardon my step, because I wouldn't be opposed with making a motion to combine the two departments and place Charles in charge.
Oh.
Of the two departments, and then work out the staffing kind of workflow at the mid-month. Because I think they're already running, the two departments are running seamless. So really.
So are we talking about.
We're in, I already.
Yeah, I mean.
I used to have questions. So are we talking about doing an interview process for these positions, or just appointing people for these positions?
Well, it would be an interim. I mean, obviously, I don't think that you can just create a new position and put somebody in it without going through an interview process. But I think you can combine the two positions and then do.
Two departments.
The two departments.
Under Charles.
Under Charles.
Can I make a point of privilege?
But.
I just want to say, Charles, you're amazing, and everybody loves you. You do a phenomenal job. So don't think any of this is about you at all. Because you are by far the most qualified candidate.
And I was being sarcastic earlier about, pre-talking about firing everybody, so.
Yes, I would not throw you.
I think that's the truest thing that's been said in the last twenty minutes, Charles.
Well, we're at a table, so. Well, I have to, we took the points of privilege to clarify all of that. Clerk, give us a report.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Yes.
We're on table. Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Despite the.
So that's.
Item number fifteen, discussion of possible action to hire a solid waste superintendent, Ms. Page.
Colonel, um, the hiring committee consisting of Ed Carr, Edward Carr, and myself conducted interviews for this position. This position was vacated by less board, who recently retired. So we conducted interviews. We would like to offer that position to Chris Armstrong, who currently is working as a solid waste foreman for us. Um, we would bring him in at the grade, already approved grade, that may need some work later on. I'm not quite sure if there's student, but it's a T-118, and we could do it on a step two, based on his education, his experience.
Sorry, second question, T-118.
Step two.
Step two. You ready for my motion?
I am.
I will happily make a motion that we hire Chris Armstrong as a solid waste at a grade T-118, step two.
Motion is there? A second, second, second. Counselor Myers? Comments, questions? I have one. Why do we always put the T in front? Now, we have anything we can queue on teams or.
That thing.
Okay.
Team Talakaw.
Okay, yeah, I just, I've always noticed, like, I assumed there was a reason, but it just always seems to haunt me. But, okay. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Armstrong. And Ms. Page, I think you're kind of off the hook for the rest of the evening here. So we'll go to item sixteen, discussion of possible action in regard to policies, four oh four, four oh nine, two eleven, and other assorted policies. You came.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Any questions on the policies?
I do.
Awesome. Which one?
Um, I was just curious on, who tracks all the training hours? Because throughout these different policies on the special operations team, you talk about, you have like certain percentages and certain minimums of training for to retain or maintain those qualifications.
Our train and development Lieutenant Randy Tanner.
Okay. So he's a busy guy, based on what I've read in here.
He is a busy gentleman.
And then you guys, your officers stay quite busy, stay current on all this training?
Yes.
So, because I imagine when they're out in the field, they don't carry a hard copy of this with them to be able to.
Actually, they can have it on the phone, there's that, so they have all their policy on the phone. So they can even refer to it on call.
And I'm sitting in the back of the car, and they're trying to figure out whether they're going to take me to jail, or to let me have it.
Keep the marijuana or to let you have it.
Who let me pass it out?
Yes, they can refer to policy roadside.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm awesome. It's basically apparently, Ms. Tess.
Um, some of the policies, a great one there, that says that, I guess we work with other organizations, basically to.
Talking about homeless, homeless persons policy, yes.
Like what kind of organizations you're talking about?
Well, just, Zoe Institute, some of the other Creo's, um, the churches, the ministerial lines, different places that provide services in town, whether it be medical, mental health, food, housing, clothing, public things. And we haven't delegated anyone to that position yet, because the policy's not created. But something, we're going to take a more proactive approach to help people find resources and talent. Because honestly, we probably are the folks in town that are dealing with the homeless more than anyone on that basis. So we probably have a better grip on who they are and what they need. So.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So in all of these, almost all of these policies, there comes a point where, I mean, with the bicycle control, bicycle patrol, that's just the one on that, we did the very first one, special operations team.
Okay.
That there becomes like a spot where it says the chief of police will designate somebody to become the coordinator to basically oversee this section. Does that, is that just part of job duties, like extra duties as a sign? Or does that become something that, you know, I want to become the bike patrol coordinator because I get an extra so much money and I want.
It's not any extra money. And like our bike patrol coordinator currently is the assistant chief. He went to the bike patrol school, and he already is the highest-paid guy in the police department, so falls under his duties.
So it just, so it's kind of random?
Kind of random, yes.
Okay. I don't know, I just.
A lot of times, those officers. A lot of times, those officers that are aspiring to move up, or young supervisors who are aspiring to move up are willing to volunteer for that sort of assignment, just to help.
Yeah, I mean, that totally makes sense, just wanted to make sure we learned.
Overworking for underpaying.
Overworking for underpaying. But we weren't somehow backing into a promise of, you know, when you get an extra $500, you get $100.
Oh, no, sir.
No, sir.
Can I, are you still asking questions?
No, that's it.
Okay. On page 78, under the shift supervisor policy.
Shift supervisor.
Page, page, yeah, page 78, acting as a public information officer in the community. I can kind of remember when we talked about that, and I know the police department does that, you do your own media as well, you guys are obviously.
Correct.
And so typically, I know your OAs don't want to be doing that, and so this is, I mean, the shift supervisor would be the public information officer dealing with the media in situations when you.
Well, it's authorized by me, yes.
When he's gonna call you first before he starts talking to Channel 268 and whoever will listen.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then on page 91, when you talk about personal property and photographing things, basically.
Is that in the homeless, that's in the homeless one too, isn't it?
It isn't the homeless one. I was just curious, do we provide the officers with cell phones or do you, how do they photograph that?
Supervisors have, um, department-issued cell phones, our body cameras can actually serve as a digital camera also, so they can remove them and take digital photos of crime scenes, property, whatever they need to.
Okay, all right, because I was just curious if somebody took those photos on their own cellphone and then they quit the next day, if we were gonna lose.
No, we typically don't take pictures with our own cell phones because then our phone is discoverable in court.
Okay.
Can be subpoenaed.
Gotcha, that makes perfect sense.
Yes.
I knew you would have some. And do, does, do the city purchase the AEDs for the cars? On page 92, the medical aid response.
Um, we have, some has been city purchased, others, there are lots of federal trainings that we've had for first responders that you get, you get equipment for free in those trainings also.
Okay, and I just ask that because other cities have talked about raising money to buy those for the city in the past.
Leadership, um, a leadership class, no, not leadership, the hospital. The hospital gave us first aid kits three years ago for the entire department.
Okay.
Like one for every color.
Okay. Well, it was something that, that Brian Hale had mentioned for leadership, 1912, and obviously we didn't harness that, but I didn't know if we still had a need for AEDs, if that's something that we needed.
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll shut up, I'm done.
Counselors, you have any questions? Do we have any more, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Combs to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Hires. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Chief, you're up again next here with discussion, excuse me, discussion in regard to issues with the purchase of police vehicles, chief.
Yes, so this was just more of a transparency agenda item. During our budget cycle, the state contract is not out yet for the next year, ours went up more than we anticipated, so we didn't budget, we didn't ask for enough money to purchase two vehicles. I'm gonna have to move some money from within the budget. I just wanted to come and let the council know, let the mayor know beforehand, because it's gonna be about $5,000 we're short, all told. So, also, it's becoming more and more difficult to purchase vehicles during our budget cycle because Ford only produces police packages a certain time during the year, and they only make so many and they shut the line down. And so it's not something that, and what we ran into this year is there's a dealership in Texas that I believe bought 800 SUVs. They don't have to follow state contracts, so they're marking them up and selling them, and so we finally found two SUVs, it took us three months to find two SUVs to purchase, so. Just wanted to come and let you know in case questions arose that I'm gonna have to move about $5,000 inter, inter-budget, inter-departmental move to purchase those vehicles.
I thought you were gonna say you're gonna move to Texas. Apparently, they have a lot of money there.
Counsel, do you have any questions to the chief? Hearing now, we will number to item 18, which is discussion and possible action regarding the city abatement board's decision to abate by demolition the structure located at 1219 East Fuller. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, chief. Counsel, thank you again. It's unfortunate that we're gonna have to talk about this item tonight, this is a situation where a homeowner is gonna lose their house, but I'll have to say that we've provided every opportunity we can to rectify the situation without demoing the property. The abatement board has been very patient with the homeowner, allowing them a significant amount of time to find the resources or some other option other than demoing that. I'm not exactly sure what you all received in your packet that was supplied by the compliance officer that's been handling this case, Vicki Green, so.
Can I ask you a question, one thing before you go? Is the homeowner here tonight or someone else?
The owner is here tonight.
Or actually, I thought you got somebody here representing?
Yeah, I hope you give her an opportunity to speak on behalf of this. You know, I found myself involved with this one pretty deeply. I've talked to the homeowner on several occasions, trying to help her find another avenue. She's in a situation where she's on fixed income, and she's not the one causing the problems at the house, but I can't say that she's not enabling the problems to happen. I don't know if you got this list, which kind of summarizes all the actions in there. You can see, um, issues started to be identified at this home as far back as 2003. We touched on it again, several years went by, we touched on it again in 2009, picked it back up in 2013, and then it was in, you know, 2016, 17, Mr. Moore really started working this property. The first part of 2018, a fire occurred at the property, and that's when fire department actually made entry into the part, the property and determined that it was unfit for human occupancy. And so, since that point, the property's been closed and we actually had it secured, it was boarded up by the city. We paid a contractor to do that, and, you know, that, or the homeowner in this process, they, I think they had all the intentions, I think the resources might have been there. They pulled a building permit to perform the rehab, but they just could never get there, and so the abatement board felt like they didn't have any other choice but order it abated by demolition.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Johnson? Hearing now, Mr. Johnson, what does the homeowner's name?
It is Jan Katerin.
Ms. Katerin with the city, I heard she was.
Jan, you want to speak?
Is there, is there someone living there now?
There shouldn't be.
No. There shouldn't be, is there someone living there?
I mean, not that I'm aware of. We, we have all the windows boarded up. The homeowner actually, you know, at the 11th hour, made some progress in the end of November, in the first part of December, you can see that, I believe you guys were provided some before and after pictures by Ms. Green. You know, they were able to fix some door jams and door locks and, you know, they made the doorways secure. You know, we're allowed, the abatement board can grant time, but I just don't think they felt confident that anything was ever gonna be rehabbed, because we saw very little progress. Some of the, some of the indicators were the inability to do the simple task like maintaining the yard. Even though we were in the abatement process, we were still having issues with tall weeds and grass and trash and those kind of issues, and so when, when they were unable to handle that, I think that it became evident to the abatement board that they couldn't handle the rehab of the house, and so rather than kick the can down the road with the boarded up residence on, you know, Short City Street, the neighbors were, they were definitely tuned into the situation. They contacted our police and fire departments on a continual basis, as well as our community action line on the website, so the neighbors were feeling the impact and they were letting us know about that, and so I think that helped prompt the abatement board into taking action like this, instead of keeping it boarded up for any longer than it already was.
You said she wasn't a child.
Um, I, I mean, I don't wanna make assumptions, but I believe it were children of hers.
Can I ask a question to differentiate? No one is living there now, you said?
There.
But you've mentioned that a person will lose this home.
Even as.
I'm trying to make a distinction. She's living somewhere else now.
Um, the last, we, we sent the intent to demo to a address that she requested her mail be sent, it was at 1219 Fuller, so I don't, she's living somewhere else, I'm confident in that. Are one of the people that helped cause this problem, breaking in and squatting and, probably ask Chief King if he's had more reports about that.
You see me pick up my phone from time to time, I'm asking exactly those kinds of questions, so I've got my answer, which is pretty much the same.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, Ms. Katerin's owned this home for over 40 years, and, you know, that's tough, it's tough to even sit up here and talk about it.
Where, where did we get with Habitat and Cherokee Nation?
We, multiple times, throughout the process, it, you know, we, I got with them, staff got with them, board members got with them, you know, I, we never got a strong commitment from the Cherokee Nation, and it's not something that Habitat can do, so.
Did anybody reach out to Northeast Department of Community today, see if she qualified in the owner occupied program?
Can't speak to that, no. I don't know that, I can't say anybody did.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear, that even though they weren't living there in the home thing, I just wanna make that distinction, okay. I mean, I'm just, Ms. Katerin, you have, you have a place to stack, correct, other than this, this structure?
See, my, my hope always was, if she can rehab it, then she can at least sell it. We have all kinds of home builders and flippers in this community, and she could at least get something out of it. What's gonna happen now is we're gonna bulldoze it, we're gonna put a lien on her property, and now she's gonna walk away with debt in this situation. There already are liens on her property for picking up trash, mowing the lawn, and doing things of that nature. I think there's about $1,100 worth of liens on the property now. I would venture a demo of a structure that size, we're gonna be looking around, I would say seven to 10.
We're, we're gonna cover the lot, you know, lot value.
Right, or value, won't cover the, yeah.
So if she were given an extension to be able to sell that property, is that an option? Would we could consider?
Yeah, you guys can do whatever you want.
Is that something that she?
You know, and that was, that was a hard deal, and, you know, my conversations that I had with her talking about that, you know, she was resistant for obvious reasons, her home, been there 40 years, and I, you know, I tried to break through that this might be your only option, that, you know, and I think towards the end, she kind of grasped that that might be the reality, but not in time for the abatement board, so.
That was pretty record, at least the appeal did not request that, so even today, it's as if she wants to remodel it slowly, so bracketed.
So the appeal doesn't include the possibility, or at least the intent of.
At least, that's what she said.
Sure.
And we're, we're not dealing with a court of law here, so I mean, it's one of those things where we can kind of work outside the bounds of that, that certainly wasn't mentioned in the appeal. You, you know, this whole thing about kicking the can down the road, this used to, might be a lot more cutthroat, maybe 15 years ago, and I was either the villain or the hero, whatever you want, depending upon your perspective, and it's probably situation-dependent. I introduced the concept of, you know, giving conditions for 30 days and 60 days and 90 days, and it's been one of those things that has resulted in some pretty lengthy extensions first by the abatement board and then by the city council, and pretty soon you're years in the process, literally years before, you know, action is taken. But in this particular instance, we, you know, we might be able to have one conversation for three more weeks and just say so long as we see it, you know, listed. Although, you know, if we get a listing, proof of a listing, then we, we can table it tonight and then act on the 23rd or whatever it'll be if, if it isn't listed. I mean, I'm just trying to avoid the scenario you described.
Yeah, or another option too, just throwing it out there, again, you guys make the decision, always confirm it, but change the date and give her a certain amount of months if not sold and rehabbed by a certain date or something, you know. I, I think I like the mayor's suggestion of the ones that, if you're going that route, because otherwise there's a lot of uncertainty on. Right. I can see that can get a lot longer.
This is just a, you know, it is or you didn't. So, I mean, I suppose the game can be played by, if your, if the listing isn't listed, but.
Sure.
I would hope that we wouldn't have an unrealistic listing too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, Mr. Carroll?
I am the neighbor. For most, there are 40 years, and that house has been a pain in my side the whole time. Soon as we got our place, first day, here comes a guy coming out by barn with his arms loaded with copper pipes, he's like, he just won't do anything. And they've broken into that house every time it boarded up, sleeping in a truck in the yard, there every day, three cars a day. The rest of the neighbors are just as tired as I am. They've broken in the trailers, my tennis, we're all ready to move out until the worst one has been gone for a while. We've been fighting this for years.
And I.
They tear it right back off. The old truck in the yard, you're watching it every day, they've started from the front and dig through it to the back, and in about 30 minutes, they started from the front and dig through it to the back.
Chief Hammons?
The house is the same way.
Oh, I'm sorry, you paused, and I just saw him approaching in a very deliberate manner. I figured he had some commentary to provide.
I do. I, I think it's very unfortunate for the situation this case was in. She is not going to stop the activity that's going on at that house. If she rebuilds that house within a month, it'll be right back to where it was. She cannot control the people that are coming in and out. They will not listen to her, they are not, I've witnessed it, I've seen it. It's just a situation unfortunately that she has no control over, even though it's her home. It's sad, it is the way it is. I think Mr. Johnson said it correctly on the, probably not exactly her fault, but the enabling is there. I witnessed it, I've seen it. I have had every neighbor in that neighborhood call me repeatedly, want something done. This house is to the point where it is a danger. The situation inside the home right now is unhealthy, and to be quite honest, Ms. Katerin doesn't need to be over there working on that house. It needs to be a professional contractor come in and do something if they were gonna fix that house, but even if they did do that, I've been in the business myself, I think you're gonna have more invested in it than this work. It's sad, but it is the way it is, and we've already worked a pedestrian getting run over while we're on the way to that house to hang out during the day, not supposed to be anybody there, because we have posted it several times that it's not being handled. My fear, she fixed the house, friends and people that live there that are in prison now will come back to it, put a nice family in there, you'd never feel safe. I've never lived in that house.
No, I wasn't really going to say anything because it might undermine the whole let us see a listing thing and the importance of the listing, but you said it for me, which is you never know who will show up.
People come, who will come back from years ago that hung out there, and we've been there 30, 35 years.
You're asking someone else to control the situation, and maybe Ms. Katerin hasn't been capable of. capable of it.
She has been capable of and I think there's people out that will come back to that house, no matter who lives in it. If you rebuild it, move in yourself, you're asking trouble.
I, I agree with Dawn and Ray that she isn't capable of rehabbing this. That's not going to happen. That shouldn't be an option. The only option I can see is selling that.
I, I just fear for the safety of anybody that ever lived on that lot, alone with that house.
You, you.
It's like the Amityville, how many?
You're absolutely right. You don't know how many, how many times that I've had people from there break into my stuff. I'm down the road, I hardly have anything there. I'm going to cut a tree out, I'm going to have to bite it down because it's stolen every chainsaw I've ever had.
It's funny visual, but thank you for that.
Hey, it's true. I caught him coming out the barn one day as I was going in and he's a lot bigger than I am and I just pretty much had to run and hope he couldn't catch me.
Ended up getting the house out of, out of an inheritance and probate situation that it's at unoccupied for just a couple of years. And, uh, two, the reason I had the same thought as you is because I had to deal with clear evidence of people being in my storage shed and around the back corner of the lot and everything else. It took them probably 18, 24 months to figure out that it was occupied and we, we weren't really thrilled with their presence.
Yeah, they stole it out of all my, all my mobile homes. I stole one guy's textbooks. I mean, what did you get out of textbooks?
Trying to better themselves.
I don't fix them.
I have a question.
Counselor Hock?
Bringing it back to the abandonment. You said it's going to be, if it's demolished, it's going to be more, I mean, the lien will be more than?
I, I speculated, I speculated that you're going to come out at least at a wash on the value of the lot. Now, that's just my total speculation.
Yeah. The empty lot is going to go for $12,000.
I'm terrible tonight. Trey, go ahead.
I've got somebody that might be interested in the property and I would say Mrs. Catrin potentially, of course, you know, not to see it, but save her the potential of eight or $10,000 lien on a $10,000 property, possibly walk away with, you know, a couple thousand dollars in pocket and then they can do with their own.
Your donations to Habitat, there could be, well, you can build a park on it if you want to do it for the city. I mean, but I always hate even bringing that stuff up because it makes it sound like we're going to come knock your house down if you don't give us your lot. So, I'd much rather the, the sale option.
The house is not prepared. It's not safe for anybody to be near.
Counselors, these are the most difficult decisions and we've been very fortunate to not have these really come before us much for, with much frequency for a while. And I think that's a testament to the abandonment board and just, you know, the process that has been implemented, but these are tough and we deal with them a lot more frequently. Noticed one other person with some deliberate intent at the front of the room and she's a member of the abandonment board. I'm not entirely certain, but hold on, Melissa, can you give me a favor really quickly?
Yes.
Uh, Grant? How appropriate is it to have applause? I can't.
Talk to her.
Sure.
I was even going to make a comment.
Well, I was just starting to say, as the, the member of the body that made the motion for this to happen, we've taken a lot of steps and we've taken a lot of heartfelt processes and tasks with this homeowner and this property. And so, I'm just here on behalf of the abandonment board. We found out about 4:00 PM today that it was on the council meeting. So, I'm just here to answer any questions that you have and to ask that you support our decision that we brought to you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the demolition as ordered by the abandonment board. Is that correct, Counselor Bliss?
Yes, as the agenda agreed.
Okay. And do we have a second? Do we have a second to that motion?
Am I the only heartless S O P O?
Pretty much.
I second.
I want, I want to refer to trade statement about he had somebody that would buy it and then they could do whatever they wanted to, give the lady some money in her pocket instead of the debt.
Can we, I, I second it, but I want to make kind of the last ditch effort in this in my motion or in my second. I think we should, I would like to, can the motion include a time? So, let's say we agree with abandonment board's decision to demolish the house on?
The, the answer is yes.
Friday, January 25th unless, you know, it's not there to be sold.
I mean, it's sold, it might not resolve your issue, that's the problem.
So, our, our, we work in, I mean, abandonment board typically works in realms of 30 days. So, we go from month to month to month and that's how this property has occurred. And there's been multiple conversations about selling this property. There's been multiple conversations with entities bigger than ourselves and bigger than the homeowner herself to help her. And the homeowner is not interested in selling. At least that's what she's mentioned repeatedly as of recent. So, I don't know if that helps that thought process, but there's been many attempts.
Because that doesn't reflect.
No, it won't be.
I mean, everything that we have in front of us is rehab. I mean, fuck my rehab, rehab, rehab.
Yes. Her request on her appeal is to rehab.
And we know that that's simply not possible. And, and we can work outside of the boundary that we choose. I'm not even that sort of thing that we necessarily need to or anything like that, but I just, you know, these are tough. So, I mean, I thank you all for trying to handle it the way you did. And Stephen, back to your point, the answer is yes. You can leave that at the discretion of the administration for us to watch the clock and, and have bulldozers there on whatever day you decide. It wouldn't need to go back to abandonment board, you all. Just handle it. We are here close. Right.
Ma'am? Can you ask her again if she would reconsider selling?
I thought about that a second ago. Miss Catrin, is, is it at all possible that you would reconsider the decision to not sell?
I'm thinking about selling. I'm saying.
Well, we, we said.
I'll sell it. But you aren't, I'll sell it.
Yeah, I promise you, it's not what anyone wants, but, but it is certainly the better outcome given the process we follow. And if you're willing, if you're telling us you're willing to do that, I would imagine that there will be some change.
I'll sell it.
And, and that would be better off.
I don't want to suck here.
I know.
I think the trouble is that this, the assumption.
I, I, right. I mean, I.
The assumption that she will be in debt. I mean, that, that's what this is all basically.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Is, we don't know what that lot is worth, honestly, and we don't know what the lot, I mean, it's across the street from a huge medical development and so does it go into that realm? So, you guys make a decision, we do live in, like I said, abandonment board lives in the realm of 30 days and at any given time Vicki Green has the opportunity to stop everything. And so, if you made the decision to abate by demolition by February 4th, because we share the same meeting day, if for some reason there was an, an ownership change or property something, if it's listed, that's not going to stop the ticker, but if it were to change hands, Vicki has the opportunity to say, stop demolition.
Kind of.
Well, I mean, the change of hands.
Yeah, right, right.
No, I'm meaning a full change of hands. I'm not meaning like where we intend on selling in the next six months.
If they close, we legally have to go back. If they close.
If they close, yes.
I'm not going to say either.
Right now, it's time.
Yeah, because that case.
I want it sold or demolished.
Just for the record too, BJ Baker contacted me this evening and he would ask that he confirm the decision. He's the attorney that oversees that board.
So, just to clarify, BJ is requesting that we demolish the home?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, when I went to make, to ask.
Give him a change.
I didn't realize that selling the home had been an option that over a year, two years, nine, 10 years, from the file started, had looked at. And so, I think that has been something that has been talked about and exhausted. I mean, I think that we're to the point where we should follow the recommendation of the abandonment board. I mean, I don't want to say that we're setting up here and strong-arming somebody that they sell them their house when they don't really want to. She started out meeting, oh, sell it. And then after pressure is like, let's sell it.
Well, no, no. If somebody found out to spin it that way, it certainly was intended to be exactly the opposite. Yeah. But, but I know what you're saying, I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
And so, I think, and the lot that I said, Melissa said, you know, it's very big next to a very big development. I mean, that lot could be worth a lot more than we think it could be worth. The demolition could be less than.
Sure. Yeah, that's my speculation. Here's one other thing too. You have, you have to consider the fact that one of the reasons that perhaps this body hasn't seen as many of these appeals is because it became known that you will uphold the decision of the people that we've asked to make. And if we start kind of undermining that too much, then you might see quite a few more make their way to you and they are all tough and they all have some reasons where you might want to reconsider. And then you, you're really kind of opening up the, the door to a lot of very difficult situations.
But first, most of the houses we abated, there are vacant houses crumbling down.
Yeah, this is not one usual situation too. Sure.
It's one of the vacant.
He doesn't make it that way.
I hear you.
We didn't find any vacancies.
Counselor, we have a motion and a second on the floor to move forward with demolition. Is there any other final comments? Hearing none, Clerk Callahan.
Counselor Holmes?
Oh, sweet Jesus. Um.
That's not a vote.
That was, I didn't want to be first, I wanted to.
I can answer for you.
Can I go last? I can't, can I?
No, man. It's been called.
Okay, so the motion is to tear it down?
Yes, ma'am. Or you have to confirm your decision.
And we've got the motion on second. Okay, yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsch?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all very much. I know those are very difficult considerations to make. Ms. Catrin, thank you for being here tonight. Item number 20 is our proposed executive session. Is there a motion? What do I do? Am I marking the wrong? Oh, so I'm so sorry. I made my notes on the wrong item. My apologies. Item 19, the discussion to adopt ordinance number 1274, 2018, rezoning property located at 223 Northeast Avenue in Telewall, where particular described as the description found in your.
Has an.
It was, but I'm still just going to have one single description wording.
Mr. Johnson? Yeah. All right. So, this request, as you can see, is a C1 to C2 request. That's not something that we typically get. This is the location. The structure on the right side of the screen is Sabalot with the white roof and that's East Avenue running north and south and Downing running east and west. The building across the street from Sabalot, some of you might be familiar with it, it was a mortgage broker, First Tribal, Linda Fithin, I believe, operated out of that location. It's currently zoned as C1, they were the commercial. The applicant approached me about the possibility of placing their vet clinic there and we discovered after that 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 would require a C2 zoning classification. There's your zoning map. There's a lot of other C2 in the vicinity of that property across the street to the north and to the east. You know, these are the kind of issues that I would really like solved for the adoption of this new comp plan. This is the one time that we have statutory authority to do a broad zoning change across the community and I think it would, it would be appropriate for us to look at our commercial corridors like Downing, Muskogee, and Choctaw and identify property that's obviously being used as commercial, that's not zoned commercial and change it accordingly and then be a little more forward-thinking and look at some properties that we think is potentially, there's going to be a request being made in the near future to change it to commercial and go ahead and make that change. This is one of those spots and so, I mean.
There's another house behind to the.
That, nah. In between it.
The oil change.
The oil change is, that you can see right by the legend, but I'm not sure that building is.
Well, then it used to be like the mortgage place.
Yeah, that's what the building we're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But there's a building in between the, the oil change place.
Is that sort of a care or something like that?
That's Box's office.
Well, you're thinking, I think of the house again, right?
Between this house and the mess room is Box's office. That was, that was Mr. Box's house.
On the corner it was, absolutely.
That's why you're talking about.
And so, their office was behind.
Their office was between it and the joint.
I think lately it's been something else.
They're still there too.
I know they have like a sign up, but.
It's currently vacant.
So, are we, are we planning on maybe having a bit up there or is there going to be the big?
That, that's our here and they, I'm sure will be happy to share you their plans. Share with you their plans.
Yeah, our, our, our plans to establish veterinary hospital there is contingent upon rezoning because veterinary clinic in the city itself required a C2 zoning.
So, are there any other documents saying, I'm, I'm not saying they're lies, sir, but are there any other documents saying that, you know, that's what we're going with?
I don't follow.
Do you not understand? I don't even have a question.
I think you're asking that it be, looking to do that purpose.
No, I just want to make sure that we don't rezone it and then it comes up for sale.
Well, here's something. What do we consider the land to be appropriate use?
Right. That's kind of what I was getting at with that previous comment about us looking at our commercial board.
Well, there's an unappropriate.
Because this, I mean, C2 seems appropriate for a.
That's not what the planning and zoning board is about. I mean, they're not, they're looking at zoning land necessarily. It's like, this is a property owner. I mean, I think to a certain extent you have to just take their word on it, but that's fine.
We're not the property owner.
We can't do that's contingent upon rezoning.
That's our only use of that property would be for that. If it's not rezoned, we're not going to purchase property.
Thank you. That's true.
Definitely need for.
Sure, we, we recently had a vet leave town and another one has experienced a health issue. And I've got a 14-year-old palm.
And pass it.
And winded. Could anybody come? No, the notices I provide are for this, I mean, like you said, I want them to focus on land use and code book and, and not public sentiment.
And this is first?
First, yes. And we won't bring it back on the mid-month, we'll bring it back on the 4th of February. Notes, notification.
Oh, the notification.
Yeah, okay. Because I can't bet on the mid-month, so I have to.
So, this is not actionable, right?
Correct. Not tonight. Yeah, just for reading. Do you have any other questions of the applicant or Mr. Johnson or anybody else?
Small and large animals.
Small.
Hearing no desire for echo, I'm sorry. Seeing as that there can be no action on that this evening, then we will now go on. What I tried to jump to earlier, item 20, is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion in a segment from Hires and Combs, Clerk Callahan.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsch?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Holmes? Yes. Motion carried.
All right, Clerk, we're ready to go. We are going to return from executive session and reconvene into our regular session. We did lose Counselor Long along the way, so we're down to three counselors. We still have a quorum and we'll go to item 22, which is discussion and possible action
We still have a quorum, and we'll go to item 22, which is discussion and possible action related to the possible purchase and/or appraisal of real property at or around the following location, 309 South Park Street in Telkow. Is there a motion, Counselor?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of this property. I'm talking slow because I'm looking to see if anybody has a contract in. Form extracted the right amount.
$30,000.
For $30,000.
We have a motion from Counselor Hires, is there a second?
No.
Second from Counselor Combs.
Does it need to be, does it need the?
Just for the contract. Yeah, we can handle everything from there.
Prove the contract is present.
I'm just gonna say contingent upon contract.
It's all already there? Yeah. It's there.
Clerk gives a roll, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
No.